2023, the secretary will call the roll.
Chair LaFara was absent, vice chair Finity.
Present.
Secretary is here, board member Catalinato.
Present.
Board member Mutu.
Present.
Board member Neely.
Present.
Board member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Could we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding we have no minutes on the agenda for the approval this week.
That's correct.
And we will be going a little bit out of order. We're waiting for the applicants for one application. So we'll start off the agenda. Carla, welcome.
You can do your work session, actually. That's what.
Oh, okay. We'll close the afternoon regular session and convene the afternoon work session, which we have one item.
I was gonna wait because I got here late.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you. Carl Danacasa for the applicant. With me is architect Sean Leonard.
Sean, good to see you.
Good to see you.
So this project is, or this site is somewhat familiar, should be somewhat familiar to you. Back in 2001, you issued a resolution approving a site plan with certain conditions for the development of this parcel. Sean's going to walk you through what the original approval was and then what the modifications to that approval are. The point of today's discussion is just to introduce you to this new concept and discuss how we want to proceed with the application.
Okay.
So the, good evening, good afternoon, everyone. So the original proposal that was presented to you, to this, to this board, included the development of a six-bedroom residence that was going to be the site, and that was a little bit more to the north. And then on the corner was going to be a cafe with four senior housing units on the second floor. So that was a 40-seat cafe, and, and then we had the associated parking, which was going to be on the north end of the property there.
With the cross-access.
With the cross-access from the Loaves and Fishes here, coming in with, so that the parking would be shared with the back parking of Loaves and Fishes now. So it all kind of made sense. And then there'd be access out onto Butter Lane from that, that point there. The new, what we're now proposing to you is, we have the.
Can you take it off the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. So what we have now is, we have the, you still have the Loaves and Fishes parking. We have the same parking that is in the back. There was, the site plan, preliminary site plan that was submitted to you, I just want to point out, had a dimensional error on the back. It's, it said 14.4 feet to the parking, and it was 15 feet. It was just the way, the way the dimension hit it. So we, I fixed that there. So it's 15 feet for the parking. So it's exactly what was proposed before. The residence is still the same residence, a six-bedroom residence that was proposed before. So the difference between really what we're going to now is instead of having the 40-seat cafe and the senior housing, it is proposed to now have two 3,000-square-foot, actually they're 27, 2,970-square-foot buildings that would be for office space, retail up on the corner there. And then we had, for that, we were able to then just get a few more parking spaces right along the side as you came right into the, came in from Loaves and Fishes.
What is that gap between the buildings, Sean?
This area here?
No, running up and down.
Oh, that, that, that right now, there was, we were toying around with, does the buildings have some sort of a connection in a way of like, yeah, of a pergola or not?
Oh, okay.
That was, that was it.
It'd be like.
The code requires a 15-foot separation.
For separation between the buildings. So the thought was, does the buildings be completely just separate, or does there have some sort of a pergola?
And be for pedestrian use?
For pedestrian use only. Yes. Yeah.
And how does this new, this modification impact the parking relative to the prior application?
So the, the, as far as parking, the, because now, instead of being one per three seats, which is the 40 seats, so before, we, we needed a total parking spaces of 32. And with the calculations now, we need a total parking spaces of 36. So it goes up by four, which I was able to rework because this was, there was less parking that was put on this side here. So I was able to put the parking right, right there between the two buildings.
And I understand that there was a reserved parking component to the previous approval.
Right.
So the additional parking was contemplated.
What, the issue that we had before was that the total sanitary density, to be able to do the cafe and the residence and the second floor, was, was way too much. So now we're proposing, the dense, that density was going to be at 1,300 gallons per day. And now what we're proposing between the residence and having these two buildings up front, that density is 746. So it's almost half the density. So there's a lot less intense use.
Have you run any traffic numbers, trip generation numbers of one use compared to the other? I'm almost thinking this type of use would generate less traffic?
Yes. But we have, I'm sorry, to answer your question, we haven't, we have not run, but I would agree with you that this would generate less traffic as, because you wouldn't have the cafe, you'd be dealing with spaces that would most likely be operating during the daytime, and then, you know, they would be shutting down for the evening, like most stores do, and, and to our offices, as opposed to a cafe that could go into the night and would probably also be operating, you know, on weekends and things. So.
Yeah. What stages the prior, was the prior, I know we had pre-submission conference. Did it get all the way to final?
You had the final resolution?
Final resolution?
Yes. And then there, there was a withdrawal of the application, I believe, last year in July. Well, the applicant withdrew from, from progressing.
Okay. So you're proposing then a new proposal, site plan proposal?
So, yeah, well, that's one of the conversations we wanted to have, is how you wanted to process this. Given that portions of this remain the same, and that the impacts on the lot are certainly, with respect to septic specifically, and gross floor area are reduced, would we be able to start this, essentially, you know, would we be able to amend the previous resolution that was issued by this board and start this past the pre-submission process?
Past the pre-submission?
Pressed past pre-submission.
So.
So still subject to public view, public consideration.
So it's almost, it's not an amendment. It's, you're gonna just go to pre-submission, pre-submission conference on this new proposal? Is that what you're?
Not, not, well, we were suggesting perhaps we could go right to final review, subject to public hearing and the like.
Is that allowable with the use change?
And just for the board's edification, you've all received a letter earlier.
Yes.
A lot of interest from the neighbors. I've gotten letters from two attorneys. So, and we were, I want to hear, obviously, with the board's preferences, but obviously, something we'll discuss next week between the attorneys to see if everybody's.
I mean, I was going to raise that because it sounded like what we were hearing from the neighbor's attorney is that we really need to start over.
Well, I, I'm thinking we don't have to make that determination now. The sentiment, I believe, would be to get this back out to public hearing. The avenue we would probably take is to schedule a pre-submission conference, Claire?
That could be a way to go.
Yeah. And without making a determination, as, once, once we schedule the conference, we take the public comment, written comment, then we can make a determination as to, to what mechanism we can get to the final. But it's important to get the pre-submission process initiated. So we're not, I don't think, Christine, we don't have to make that decision now.
You don't. If you have, if you want to set it down for pre-submission, I think that would satisfy.
I think that's what the applicant's agreeing to that as well.
I would like to, if that's the way this board's leading, I'd like to get that process started as soon as possible.
Right, right. And doesn't hold up the process, and, you know, then we can see once we get the public comment and then so forth. Do all the referrals, right?
No, pre-submission has no referrals.
They don't have referrals?
No, it's, it's for the public to give feedback to you before you make an environmental decision or, you know, that step on the project. It is a good.
But we will have to redo referrals on this right fire.
We would. In any case, we would have to do that at the site plan stage. Yes.
So that's administrative stuff that has to be done anyway, you know. So what do we need, well, we're not in session. Do they have a completed pre-submission application?
They have the plans, which is great. I would just need the application within a day or two for us to, to start our part of the process. Yes.
Can we schedule it for?
We could, if the planning board's agreeable. And you, you put on the record that you can submit an application tomorrow.
Yes.
It's a two-pager.
And a fee. Don't forget the fee.
And the fee.
Do we have a proposed date, Claire?
I would say February 9th is open right now.
And what do we call it, the application, Loaves and Fishes still, right?
Just so we're clear, you have to have the plans in some tomorrow. Yeah, I will put that in the resolution. I have the plans. I just would need the actual application.
By tomorrow. Sure.
And the fee.
And the fee.
So I think, okay, we can take an action now because we're not in session. So.
We'll do an add-on.
We'll do it as an add-on, and we'll set that, actually, we could, once we adjourn out of here, we can do, take it up right off the bat. So any other questions from board members?
I just want to put on to the record, the organization that I lead, East End Food Institute, has a business relationship with Loaves and Fishes, so I'll remove myself from the discussion.
Okay, great. That's noted.
Thank you.
So, very good. We'll close the afternoon work session, convene the afternoon regular session. You can stay put. And our first item is going to be a walk-on item entitled "Loaves and Fishes." And our action is to set a pre-submission conference for February 9th at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by George. All in favor? I opposed, abstentions? We have one abstention. We have five yes and one absent.
One recusal.
One recusal.
No, yeah, one recusal. Recusal, sorry. I called it abstention, that's a recusal. And five yes and one absent. I hope I got that right.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Sean.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Dan.
Carl. Pretty well. Do we have, Anthony, is your people?
Yes, they are.
They are. Okay. We're gonna go a little bit out of order because of time, some scheduling conflicts. We're gonna go right to the, the, I don't, you have 911 Flanders LLC. Item 10 on your agenda. How are you?
Good. How's everybody?
Good to see you again.
All right. So if I, if I, just, remember, I gave you a bunch of information last time. You've been looking at this project for a while now. This is for the redevelopment of what was a gas station use at the traffic circle there on Riverside with a new gas station with six pumps and a 7-Eleven convenience store. We've been working through the secret process. The applicant gave us some revised plans and some additional information that I gave to the planning board, in addition to all the original information that was submitted by the applicant, as well as the original traffic study. Because we're trying to work through the secret process. We initially were talking, you know, we were looking at a positive declaration, and then we had some new information come in, you know, happen, you know, looking at everything, looking at the new information. I don't know how the board feels, but what, you know, the big issue with this is obviously the traffic, the traffic circle, right? I mean, that's, that's going to be the biggest one. Obviously, design issues, we could deal with architecture like we normally do, and then all that stuff. So traffic is a big issue. And so my thought is, is that with the board agreeing today, and I have sent out requests for proposals, is that in order to do this appropriately, that we should hire a traffic consultant to advise the board as to the study that was done, any questions that the board has, and then if there's any other design or mitigations that we can consider to incorporate, it should come from the traffic engineer as opposed to the planner or review.
So in other words, the applicant submitted traffic data, you, we'd like to get a professional set of eyes on that to advise us.
That's, that's what I would like to do.
The applicant's, go ahead, please just.
We have no objection to that.
Identify yourself for the right.
Yes, thank you. Keith Brown, Ronald Mazzaleo, LLP, 538 Broad Hill Road, Street 301 West, Millville, New York, 11747. Good afternoon.
Good.
Before we got started, Mr. Treza and I spoke briefly outside. He got me up to date as what he was going to recommend. We don't have any objection with that. We actually had been pressing to get the traffic consultant hired as quickly as possible so we could have that review, so you could have a better understanding from your point of view, any potential recommendations that, that could be made. We've submitted a very thorough and detailed traffic impact study. That's why we believe that a POSDEC is not necessary, because we believe it's not going to reveal anything else that hasn't already been submitted. There's been quite a lot of documentation that's been submitted relative to this application that is now within all the new board members purview, that you could take a look at and get up to speed, is where the applications are.
Wasn't there also concerns about parking and, and maneuverability within the site?
So, yes. And so, and that came out of the pre-submission conference. Part of those questions that we raised is, a part of the review that we would want from the, the traffic consultant is that, because those were some of the questions that they had. So internal circulation, they have reduced the size of the building by a little bit and reduced the amount of parking variance that they're asking for, which is why I wanted to get this information to the traffic consultants, so they have the new information. But that would be part of the review, Gloria, is the internal circulation and how queuing would work and all the rest of it. So that, that would come out of the review as well.
Okay. Because that, that, that was definitely a concern aside from the traffic circle itself.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I should, should reiterate that point.
Yeah. And how much was the convenience store reduced? It was over 3,000 originally?
Well, the, the total size of this building was just over 3,000 square feet. And then, then of course, there's the actual, just the retail space, as you all know, we've had this discussion in detail. It's been reduced by 200 square feet as of now. And then what we could look at after we have our traffic study is to see, you know, what, what comes out of any recommendation.
Because we've, we've looked at like a 700 to 800 square foot convenience store. And I think when I say that I, that's the internal, that's not the full size of the building. That's the retail space.
Well, the retail space inside, I think, is roughly 1,500 and change, and the, the original size of the building, and then 3,000 square feet total. And I believe everything.
But our average in this town is more like 700 or 800.
Yeah, well, you'll see. And we're gonna, when we do go through the secret process, they provide an analysis. Obviously, we're going to provide our detailed analysis as well. There's a range of, of sizes, you know, in, in there. You know, because what, what's hard, Gloria, as you know, is, is nothing's codified, right, in terms of maximum size or anything. So, but they did reduce it, and, and we do have an analysis that shows what the other sizes are. So we're going to do a comparison, and based on any number of factors, size of the property, number of pumps, all that stuff.
One thing we'd ask you to bear in mind is that when you compare this proposed convenience store to the other two gas stations on the circle, number one, one doesn't even have a working bathroom. They have a porta potty outside. And the other one has a single unisex bathroom. We are proposing two fully ADA compliant bathrooms, and the whole entire store will actually be ADA compliant. What I mean by that is, you know, when you go into a convenience store, you'll have the racks of shelving, they call it gondolas, actually. This store will allow for someone who is wheelchair-bound to actually maneuver around the store without having to bump into shelving. So we haven't even gotten to the part of the discussion of reducing possibly a bathroom to go to a unisex bathroom. But that's part and parcel why the store is the size it is. And it's about 1,400 square feet on the, on the inside. But I think the worthy analysis is to look at, I think there was the East Quag store also that we've submitted. But we have an outside planning consultant who has submitted not one, but two reports. And I think it's worthwhile for you to review those reports, because he did a very nice comparative analysis to the other stores, not only on the circle in Riverside, but also elsewhere in the town. Okay?
Did you have anyone on your team on Zoom, Mr. Brown? I didn't know.
Actually, it's Jefferson Murphy.
Okay.
He's, he's listening in. I asked him, he was having trouble hearing the last application, but I just texted him. He said, he's, unfortunately, he got pulled down to Miami where he has a relative going to school down there.
Oh, okay.
So he's actually listening in on Zoom.
Okay, great, great.
He's actually coming in.
He's, he's coming in on, okay. I heard Charles mention someone.
The voice of Oz.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jeff.
Jeff, we can hear you.
Hi, I just started my video also. How's everybody today?
Good. We've got you visual, too.
Yeah, I'm calling you from sunny Miami. It's, it's a balmy 74 degrees. I'm down here with Karen and my kids, taking Sean back to college. So thank you for the opportunity, for having the Zoom as an option. It makes things a lot easier, everybody. And as Keith mentioned, I will be testifying later on, not today, about how we believe the size of the building is comparable to those that have been approved elsewhere in the town. And I prepared a number of very thorough, detailed reports and comparisons of that. So I'd ask that he dust them off, the reports off, and then take a look at them. And when we have our next meeting, we can have that discussion.
Great. That's, that'll be very helpful, Jeff. Your, your volume was a little bit low, but we heard the substance of your comments. And if you can even forward that digitally whenever it's ready, Anthony will distribute to the board.
Yeah, I highlighted some of the things that I saw under the former EAF Part III prepared by staff. And I highlighted some of the things that I think were faulty in it, that I would have to be reconsidered. And obviously, the EAF Part III would have to revise based upon revised plans as well.
Good. And you, you were, you were party to our discussion about getting the traffic consultant to review the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was expected.
Okay, now your volume's back up. Whatever button you hit.
I'm leaning, I'm leaning closer to the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to stay away from the vacationers behind me. I'm having a good time.
Understood.
And I have, just, you know, I have read the traffic impact study. I do support it, the proposal to get a consultant, because I do have a number of questions.
That's good.
After reading it.
That's great.
And I think, good, so what we'll do is when we come back, we'll have some choices that we could choose from. We can move forward with that. And then we can start giving the information, you know, from the board and the applicant to, to the consultant.
So I think what you're hearing is the process is, we're advancing the process, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
That's agreeable to you?
We're delighted to hear that.
There's no action? I mean, we're not on any deadline? We don't?
No, no, now we're in the secret process, and we're going through that. So we're, we're.
Do we have to do anything to hire the?
We will next time. I'm going to have numbers for the board to see who's, who's responded.
Okay.
And the applicant knows that. I've asked them for hard copies of the new sets I've been, for them to give.
We'll get those hard copies. I already texted my staff. They're gonna get them over to, to Mr. Treza. If I just may, I'd like to just note for the record, Amanda LaRosa from Stonefield Engineering, she's on the Zoom call. She's the outside traffic engineer. We also have Mr. David Fitner from High Point Engineering, who is the site civil engineer. And I also would like to record to note that Mr. Andrew Sleepy, who is representative of his family, the Sleepys have owned this property, by the way, since 1965. So this is not a speculative build. This is not a, you know, find a tenant, build it out and flip it. They've owned this property for many, many decades, and they would, it's laid fallow, as everyone knows, and for those who don't know, for about 10 years. So, and there was a previous application, probably about six years ago, I'd say, for Cumberland Farms, that was 5,000 square feet. So this is almost half of that. So.
Well, we're certainly anxious to get, see the site enhanced and developed.
Yes, as are we.
So.
So we'll be back next time, then.
We will get this going for you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And Jeff, thank you. Joy, use suntan lotion if you. Thanks again for.
And thank you for accommodating me and my schedule.
Anytime. Thanks, Mr. Brown.
Have a nice Saturday.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Anthony, I think, did you want us, are we?
I think, I think.
Oh, Michael, Mike Landis is here. And Janice is here, too. Wow, okay.
Two days, two days in a row.
Sorry, missed those yesterday.
We did.
We're moving to item two on the agenda, special exception standards for golf courses. We had, and we had a chance to, you circulated the proposed legislation.
Yes, we have copies here if anyone didn't have them. Yes. So, yes, we're actually, the public hearing is coming up, February 14. And this is related to, as you know, for many, many years, the planning board has been approving housing accessory on golf courses and basically setting the standards. It's worked just fine. When challenged recently, it was looked at and said, well, this has issues like it's, it's, if they have cooking and sleeping quarters, it can't be designated under that accessory definition. So we looked at changing the accessory definition and, you know, because it says now, except ag housing and except restaurant housing. And we were going to say like, except golf course housing. And then we thought like, why don't we just make it its own thing? Because it really is. Because it's dormitory, instead of like an exception, it is something. We know we have all these hundreds of acres in golf course use. Let's put the dormitory, you know, living quarters for golf course employees as its own definition and its own, you know, regulations. So that's what the town board's been doing. And so they came up with this, that it has its own definition, living quarters for golf course employees, and that is defined as group or dormitory housing in a building or buildings that may include cooking and sleeping for employees, and is located on the same property as an 18-hole golf course. So if you're a nine-hole golf course, you're out of luck. You have to be an 18-hole golf course.
I was just gonna ask you, was, because of the amount of property, or was that just?
Yeah. You know, like, and all the golf courses, as you know, are mostly, they're previously in the past, they were approved by special exception, then they did away with that, then they were approved by PDDs, then they did away with that. So there's only if you have a permitted golf course.
The town owns a nine-hole golf course.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to put it there. And they know that. They looked at that. So.
Foxabuck, can you have?
No.
Um, so. Which I think is the only nine-hole in the town?
Yes. There's another?
Bridchant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost forgot. Yeah, Bridchant. So the amendment would be adding this little special exception standard, 162.24, living quarters for golf course employees. So saying that it has to be on the same property. Like, you can't just rent some other random single house lot and be like, this is my golf course housing. You know, it has to be on the golf course. B, they started to put some setbacks. There was a lot of conversation because really, it always is case-specific. And, and the board understood that your board has done a good job citing these things based on the context. So it's hard to put these rules in, but at the same time, they felt that 150 feet was the same thing as the ag housing, ag labor housing. And so it was similar to that. So they put it in here. But gave you the opportunity to approve reduced setbacks. Say it's a golf, say there's a property line, but in all cases, it's still the golf course. So you don't have to do 150 feet from an indivisible, you know, invisible line. So it gives you the ability to amend that without having to go to the CBA. C was related to the number of employees. There was a lot of discussion about this. They picked 50 golf course employees to permit it to reside on the premises. Many golf courses have many, many more employees than 50. Usually, it's the professional caddies and those type of staff that live in the staff housing. And we tried to just capture, you know, Sabonic has around 40, Atlantic, the last approval was 38 or so, you know. So like 50 just seemed like, you know, within the limits of what has already been done. And there was also a lot of discussion about, like, you know, not crowding people into buildings. So only 25 employees per building. Living quarters, D says, living quarters for golf course employees may be located in separate detached building. It should say S. Oh, A, separate detached building, or may be attached or combined, as long as it doesn't exceed 30. So some, like, a little bit of design guidance here, and that the maximum should not exceed 7,000 square feet with a total of 14 if more than one building is proposed. And then they want to give the guidance that the massing and associated parking facility arrangements are situated to reduce and minimize impacts on any adjacent neighboring properties. And that's the whole point. Not to like, push all the housing, all the way, you have got this huge golf course, and let's go all the way to the lot line to the, you know, and annoy the neighbor. We don't want to do that. We want to set it back 150 feet, buffer it. We don't want the parking. We don't want to bother anybody. And that's the idea.
You don't want to see it from the road.
Right. Well, you could see it from the road, like, some, one of the golf courses has frontage on the highway. And like, so what if you saw some housing there? Like, it's not necessarily a bad thing. So it's really context-specific, and so it really gave you still all that opportunity to review it and, you know.
Genesis, is this seasonal or year-round?
Year-round. But typically, so a lot of times, they leave and go to wherever, the Bahamas or some other place. So it doesn't have to be.
I'm almost questioning the 30. I understand with the 32-feet foot height requirement, because it's residential height. But typically, these are surrounded by acres and acres. But typically, these are surrounded by acres and acres. And I'm wondering, do we, is there, would it be productive in the interest of saving sprawl to allow for some additional height? As we do in some waterfront applications where you can go to 40 feet to get an extra story?
So you're gonna get three stories rather than two?
Yeah, then you have three stories.
We'll put that as comment.
Yeah, and I'll also make my pitch as I always do, and Lori and I'm sure will look back for, for the provision of solar. This is new code and the only way we're gonna get solar power is to codify it. So.
Okay, so I have allow for additional height and provide for solar.
Solar.
And then, of course, it just, on the table of uses is just basically, it's a special exception where a golf course is currently permitted only, so.
Is there any consideration for this number of units to have onsite wastewater treatment or do they go into this IA?
They would, that's a good question. All new construction is required to have an IA by the Suffolk County Health Department.
Yeah.
So I think that would be covered. And we require it too.
Right. From an engineering perspective, where does the, where's the tipping point on, I'm not an engineer.
Well, it's all new construction, yeah.
For wastewater treatment, for an onsite sewage treatment plan? Yeah. How many units would you have to have to make it?
I mean, you're talking hundreds of acres and then you'd have to really do that whole like density kind of calculation. I don't, I don't think you'd be there for like these small little, single occupant dormitory type of, you know. But if you were to subdivide the golf course, then.
Right.
I don't know that you would need an STP for these little things.
Would an IA be required if they retrofitted an existing building?
More than 25%, yes.
Yeah, and that's Suffolk County now, so that's not even us.
Right, right. Well, it's us too.
We're encouraged that this is finally getting codified, getting into the code.
Great. So do you have any other comments for this one?
No, I think we're, can you, can we adopt a report based on our comments that you have?
A lot for district.
And we can move this forward to the town board. Do we have a motion to adopt the report?
I have a question.
Sure.
Parking.
It does, it says, the massing and associated parking facility arrangements shall be so situated to reduce and minimize any impacts on adjacent neighboring properties. So the parking is still on you to design in the site plan.
Yeah.
Well, then do we talk about electric, charging stations?
You can make that as a comment?
I opened a can of worms this morning. That's what happens when you get up at 5:15.
Do you want me to write provider solar slash EV charging?
Yeah, sure. I mean, this is.
It's your recommendation?
With new construction, we should, we should always say that.
Okay.
10 years, 15 years from now, many employees may be driving electric cars. I need a place to charge it.
According to statistics.
Luckily, in the golf course setting, I think that they would probably be happy to, you know, do that.
I just glimpsed that whole beautiful project with all these extension cords running out of windows. Oh, my God, we're gonna flanders on me.
I took a chuckle and I was, I was, actually, I read that like at 7:30 drinking my coffee.
PVC chases are very, so we do have a motion by Craig on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Lori and all in favor. I oppose the extensions. We have six yes, one absent to adopt the report. Michael Landis, Lori, you have another one for us.
One more.
Yes, and this is.
It's topical, given how our conversation is ending.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, sorry, if I, like, so Mike had written the battery storage code and we worked very closely on the, this solar code. And then I kind of amended a lot of it, but, so that's why I'm here, because some of it is, might need some explanation. But I think it's, this is basically to allow solar as its own independent use, like a commercial solar. Or a field of solar, right, instead of just.
Not a field landfill.
Well, that, but more so, you know, private landowner can now vell themselves to our code, would be potentially able to, and put solar, you know, as a land use, in addition to batteries or just solo on its own, you know, just solar arrays. So, but, but I found that the, any renewable energy facility over 20 megawatts, we are then like shut out and it goes to the state. Like the PSC reviews it, which is the Public Service Commission. So this code, it just is an approval for under 20 megawatts, and then we just don't allow over 20 megawatts. And then when the PSC, if someone went to them, they would go, well, the local municipality doesn't even allow it. So we don't have to have this battle with the state, which other municipalities have had. I think that would help us to maintain our own control.
Is there any reason why we would want something that large?
No. And honestly, the way the land uses are and the.
I was gonna say, I think, I think that's the cost of land we wouldn't, wouldn't.
It wouldn't even get to that point. Like, you're not gonna get 800 acres of solar in Southampton, because if you had 800 acres, you'd be putting houses or something. We don't even have 800 acres to put it on, so there's that. So the big premise of all of this commercial solar is like, well, where would you put it? And then we devised this, if you skip to page, I'm sorry. It gets into like, we already have solar codes, so kind of a lot of the beginning is like amending like things that we already do, like residential and accessory, like where we put it. But the, so if you, and then how to do it as a land use starts on page 10, solar energy systems, medium and large scale. So, so you can see that B talks about opportunity areas and then avoidance areas. And the first part of that is like, well, if, if I was gonna put it anywhere, I would first want to put it in previously disturbed locations, like a landfill, a sand mine, a light industrial parcel that's already been cleared, a junkyard, existing parking lot. It does say golf courses where scenic view shed is not compromised, you know, you might have, you don't even see it. And previously disturbed areas, roofs, rooftops, municipal properties, parcels that have been previously cleared, recharge basins or other set asides through the subdivision process. So that's where we want to steer people to. We want you to go there first. And then we want to avoid flood hazard zones, APOD, you know, like the green for green. We don't want to have to clear to put solar lands in. We do, we say not ag lands at this point, because only if it's for the farm. Because, you know, you've been sitting here all these years preserving farmland for the view sheds and community character and this and that, and we.
And to keep agriculture.
To keep food and food production. So it's better to just start out with, just, you can have solar for the farm operations, but we're not talking about filling up farms with solar, although there's a lobby to do that. Keeping it out of the open space, greenbelt areas, historic, you know, cultural resources designated like CPF lands, except municipal facilities like a landfill, scenic corridors, wetlands, and central pine bands core. Obviously, that would not be a good idea, incompatible growth area when you can't meet the standards. So let's say you could meet the standards, that's fine, but if you can't meet the standards, then it's an avoidance area. Also, it's tricky in those places where you have clearing restrictions because your, your solar access is not guaranteed, right? Like the next door neighbor is gonna have this shade on you. So you really don't, you really want it in more open space areas.
Distrib areas in the, even in the core, you know, former landmines and, you know, brownfields.
We do, true, and that is a good point. Maybe I want to make that as a comment.
Yeah.
Central Pine Band Core Preservation Area, that there are disturbed lands in the core.
To the extent that it could be located in previously disturbed areas, you know.
But would you need, would you need to be, in order to install and maintain an access, is that gonna be involved clearing in the core then?
Well, presumably, previously disturbed areas will regenerate.
I'm thinking of these former sand mines.
Such as former sand mines. That does, because we say sand mines, but then we have sand mines in the core, so that, so they're stuck in the middle.
Yeah.
That's interesting. And that's a good point. So I'm gonna add that as a comment because I think that's a good thing to say. Landmines.
Jess, this may seem like a silly question, but that's what I do. So approach, approach zones for aircraft, like by air, by airports. Do the panels, like any large scale, you know, any kind of reflection that may interfere with a pilot on, you know, visual flight rules coming in?
I researched this and it's not really a thing. I mean, a lot of airports are now putting solar panels on. I mean, we can double check.
The county at Gabroski has solar panels.
On the, well, that is my silly question.
No, it's not.
It wasn't concerned. It's something we gotta look at.
Well, didn't, didn't we hear that from the, the Amazon people when we wanted to put solar on the roof of their building? And they said we can't do it because the airport won't let us?
Could be true, because we tried to get solar when we first did that PDD, remember? And it was like a real hard problem.
I, I don't know how they could have solar at the airport, but then question a building adjacent to the airport having solar on its roof.
Well, when we're in, within a certain distance of an airport, we have to refer to the county, and if it wasn't allowed, they would be the first ones to tell us.
They have no control, the airport does not have control over crowded buildings off their site. Maybe that was their concern.
I'm pretty sure I, I heard Clarence shaking her head, yes, that we, that.
Yes, that question.
Yeah, and that was the answer we got from.
So we never referred it to the county for refusal. This was just the applicant saying that it was allowed.
Airport may be reluctant because they don't have control over, over structures that are not on site. So if there is a problem with the Amazon facility, they'd have no recourse to address it, to take it down and modify it. That might have been their concern.
So are you looking to add a comment where they add an avoidance area of airport approaches or otherwise not permitted by AA or something like that?
Section 3I says, all solar panels should have anti-reflective coating to prevent glare, so that that kind of resolves that issue anyway.
Glare was, we did speak to the industry about glare and they assured us that, that I guess the technology had improved.
Yeah, the earlier ones did have glare.
So in looking back at this, Mike and I realized, like, we designated small scale solar as up to 5,000 square feet. Medium scale as between 5,000 square feet and five acres, and then large scale as five acres to 20 acres. So the question is, the medium scale and the large scale pretty much follow the same process. Is there any benefit to saying medium scale, which is a smaller arrays, get some kind of quicker review process? Or they're both just special except, I have it as they're both still just special exceptions.
A lot of times, you might be near residences and you'd want to have the process, you know, robust process.
So the question is, is there any point in delineating large versus medium if it's the same process? We define small, medium, large, but the medium, large follow the same process.
Then why have two sets of rules?
Right, why even call it that? It doesn't even matter.
Just all are considered in the same way.
Yeah, because when we initially started this, we were thinking tiers and like a cell tower or something. Tier one was like, you go fast, tier two was.
So what's the difference in process between small and medium and large?
Small is like less than 5,000 square feet and you can go through an administrative review for that. Medium and large are the same. It's the special exception site plan. I was thinking, do you want to just make one a site plan and the other a special exception site plan? Or it didn't, we didn't write it that way, but then we're just rethinking like, why do we even say medium and large?
I'd just go state what up to this size is, goes through one process, and this size and over goes through the other process.
Right, so it's really just small and large.
You're not making small, medium, large, just kind of judgmental.
The medium doesn't really do anything. Being medium doesn't get you any quicker through a process. That's why we usually tier them out like this in terms of how, how you go through the stream of review. So is there any, you know, if we're, the thought was if there's anything we can do for the medium scale, but I know we have all these special exception standards, so I don't, I don't know. Not really. I guess it just, okay, so I don't know if you want to make that comment. The town board, it's already through their process and already written this way. You may want to say there's no sense in differentiating between medium and large.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So it just over 5,000 square foot goes through.
Site plan, special exception.
A site plan, special exception, yeah.
Yeah. See, site plan is one thing. Special exception means like you may not be permitted, like more than five acre, you know, maybe, depending on if you meet these things. I would also mention that Mike and I looked up there, they went through a whole SEACRA for solar. And it's a type two action when it's on the the opportunity areas we were talking about. So it, like a landfill or, or those brownfields or places like that are actually, if it's less than 25 acres and it's a landfill, it's type two action. The other ones, the other places, like if you are clearing more than 10 acres, it's still a type one action, so.
So, so this was drafted with the, by you guys with the assistance of state documents and industry documents, like best practices kind of.
We looked at all the state, New York state, and we also, at least I do, I tend to look at Massachusetts because there, you know, we have a lot of like Antucket and Martha's Vineyard and Cape Cod. And like these places that are, you know, and Claire went through a bunch of codes also, you know, early on in this. So we took the best of everything, kind of put it together.
Why reinvent it?
Yeah, so then, then we found nicer to guide, guidance documents for the SEACRA, which we were happy to find. It's a type two action in many instances, but you still have control when, if they're clearing more than 10 acres. Still a type one action. So this is really pretty cut and dry. We, we try to organize it like, well, I would just make the also comment that just, just now when we were going over it, we realized there was some scribbler errors in the tables, the sections. Section eight should say residential table of use and reference the right section, so if you don't mind, I'd put that as a comment, so that way we can correct it.
Janice, I would only, I would only bring attention on page 15, number seven, this decommissioning. Unlike, it's, maybe even certified more, I mean, are you envisioning performance bonds?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, performance bonds, we usually, think of the term performance bond, it's to perform a certain, a certain action, a certain improvement. And once that performance is completed and inspected, then it's released. This is almost like, first of all, I think it's gonna be cumbersome, number one. Number two, the, the difficulty of the department of tracking and maintaining bonds, they usually letter of credits, they expire. They have to be renewed by resolution. I've seen a whole slew of them fall through the cracks. I mean, it, in the reality, if, if the town had to enter to decommission one of these facilities, the recourse is, is, I would think, the property. The, the property itself, it would be a lean on the property and you could gain performance compliance in that respect. I don't know, I just think, you know, you know what I'm talking about, Missy?
I do. So would you rather?
Have a maintenance bond going, these are 20, 30-year bonds that would have to be monitored, maintained.
Maybe instead you might want to recommend like some kind of contractual obligation more so.
We could do that.
Yeah, covenant or contractual obligation.
What, what did we, what did we do with, with the battery storage?
Decommissioning fund.
Performance bond.
That's why we did the same thing here.
Yeah, so I mean, to me, they should be, they should.
We gotta decommission and fund a plant and a fund. They have to pay to the fund afterwards.
I mean, I think they should, they should be, they should be treated the same, it seemed to me.
We, we did this again because we did it in the bat, but I agree with you, Dennis, it is cumbersome and it is sort of hard to track.
Unless they pay a one-time fee, maybe for a portion of that, that's held in escrow, held in a fund and properly invested, you know, 30 years that they want to.
They were on the.
What's that?
The property owners should be on the, it should be on their dime. It's just, once you get the town involved, then. I would just make them put an escrow and a contractual obligation, which is more intense than just a code provision, right? It's like a code is one thing and like being in a contract. I don't know if the town attorneys would want us to have some, I think a covenant probably more than a contract.
Covenant, yeah.
All right, escrow, escrow, evidence of escrow with a covenant.
Yeah, covenant.
But I, then you have, then you should be changing your cell, your battery storage code.
And it would trigger, it would be recorded on title, because if this facility were ever transferred, the new owners would then have to reengage in the, you know, whatever contractual agreement we have.
And they could contract between the two of them to make them responsible. Okay, that's fine. So, and then the other comment was, should the board agree, you should change battery storage?
Yeah, amend the battery storage, because they should, it seems logical, they should be treated the same way.
Okay, that's fine. So, and then it's just sort of, a lot of it is just what you need to submit, what we're looking for in the review. I don't really have much else to say other than, you know, we tried to make it fairly straightforward. We're looking to want to have these things, so we're not trying to make it so cumbersome that someone doesn't want to put it in. But at the same time, we want to always protect the neighboring properties. So any other comments?
So, so I mean, on page 15 also, item seven does talk about a performance bond.
Yeah.
But item L also talks about. But item L also talks about decommissioning, finding that the owner should pay into.
Right, so that comment will be on both of these items.
You have to amend the whole.
Section, which is fine.
We'd be looking at letter K, I suppose, with the whole decommissioning and.
It would have to be looked at in its entirety, probably, we, we banned it, their town board is so fine.
What's the best way to do it?
Okay, that's fine.
So do you have enough comments to generate a report and we can act on that?
Sure, and my comments from you were that, you know, the disturbed area, the, the conflict between you may have, you say that a land, um, sand mine or a landfill is an opportunity. And at the same time, you say it's an avoidance in the core, so we want to just rectify that. The differentiation between the medium and large scale, the table of use that I mentioned, we had some scrivener errors on, and the decommissioning fund.
Good for both.
For both, and that, you know, what you said, I wrote down, Dennis, and that if you're going to be changing that, you should change the battery storage code.
Great. Okay, with those comments, we'll, do we have a motion to, to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria?
Second.
Second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. We have six yes, one absent, and thanks to Michael Angelo as always for guiding us and, and Janice too for guiding us through this new technology.
Yeah, he does all the research.
Mike always has something in our inbox every week, like, check this out.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks for coming in. All right, we're gonna keep rolling.
All right.
Anthony, did you want to?
Yeah, I have four, five and six, so.
Okay, let's, let's go for it.
The number four is Padilla, Joseph Padilla, I took this over from Jackie. It's a final subdivision application. It's a three lot plan involving two properties totaling just over 68,000 square feet in the R20 zoning district, aquifer protection overlay district. It's in Noyak. There are two through lots, Ridge Road and Bayview Drive West with two existing residences. And the subdivision plan for which the pre-application was done was for a three lot plan, maintain the existing house on this one lot, the existing house back here. And then the third lot would access off of Bridge Road. Property is subject to clearing restrictions and, uh, and it's also in the, um, in addition to the APod and to the archaeological sensitive area. We did get a report on this one. So just going through the resolution, it's a pretty simple subdivision. The pre-app report didn't have any major recommendations in terms of buffers or anything like that. So just a real quick, oh, it was page 18 in your packet, I'm sorry. That's where it starts. So eighteen, so the resolution is written, starts off with the findings, pretty typical, the health department approval was granted. It was type two action under SECRE, so no further environmental required, although it is an archaeological sensitive. And they did submit a report back in 2017 when the application was first reviewed with no findings there. The installation of the new IA system is required for any construction on lot three and any substantial improvements on lot two, now lots one and two. And by the way, that's now standard for throughout town health department regulation. So we had a hearing with a 10 day comment period, no comments were received. Number six talked about the clearing, which is 60% of each lot, based on the lot sizes. Number seven, the park fee would be paid a flat fee of 2,500. We have two existing residences, so you assess the park fee on the additional lot that's being created. Number eight, the map is in substantial agreement with the pre-app report. Number nine and 10 are from a different subdivision, so that's a mistake, so those will come out of the resolution. And then number 11, which will change to number nine, it's not subject to long island workforce housing. Town engineer is recommending a two inch drainage here. He normally recommends three, that's why I highlighted it in the resolution, whatever the board wanted to do. Conservation board made comments, noted that the clearing has been accurately depicted on the map. And then the lots are subject to the new IA system as I just indicated. Office of Fire Prevention came in with their comments, sorry, the area served by public water and fire hydrants, so there's no other recommendations. And then the historic board indicated that there were no historic resources. We didn't get any other referral comments and obviously it's received health department approval. So the resolution is to approve the three lot subdivision plans, the map of Joseph Padilla, prepared by Joseph Borowski, dated October 13, 2015, and last revised June 20, 2022. A subject to the following, the changes to the map, all proposed structures shall be removed. The map title shall be stated as final standard subdivision map, Joseph Padilla. The clearing calculation shall be updated to indicate, it says the maximum and square footage for each lot. That's actually provided on there, I think. Although they showed the existing on there, so we just want to know what the total maximum permitted is based on the lot area. So that, that should go on there. And the postal delivery numbers for each lot, payment of the park fee, covenants and restrictions, the standard, no further subdivision of the lots, no lot line changes without a planning board approval. Two of the lots are already served by existing utilities, so no new utility poles for overhead utilities for the new lots. And again, installation of utilities underground for lot three. And I highlighted here, Tom's memo says two inch rainfall, but I noticed that we've been getting three inch. Am I right, Claire, that we've been getting three inch?
Especially in California.
So I just wondered if you just should do it as a three inch rainfall.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
And I think that would be okay.
We're fine.
Okay. Oh, and then retention of all stormwater during and after construction on site, submission of the draft declaration of covenants restrictions, title certification, mortgage consent applicable, approval of the legal documents. And then submission of the MyLRS and paper prints for signature, which have to be filed within 62 days after it's signed by the secretary.
Great. Bruce, did you need to?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Pretty cut and dry, anything for board members? We have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Craig?
Second.
Second by, uh, Kate. All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Six yes. Gloria is here.
Yeah, I'm here. And I definitely want three inches rainfall.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anthony and Luciano, we have a.
That's up page 25.
Yeah. Your pre-application report?
Yeah, all right, let me just get to that. So this, this is the property, it's on Millstone Road. We've looked at this, it's got the existing single family resident tennis court, two lined ponds. People have been looking at this for a while, this is another one I took over. There is town owned open space, if you see here, to the north and to the east. And actually, just looking at this aerial from our GIS, here's the property here, you can see the town open space. And you could also see the Palmonoff Trail is located to the, to the south.
Where's Old Snake Harbor? Oh, no, where's Middle Line?
Middle Line is to the south here.
Okay.
That's, yeah, just south, so this is north of Middle Line, so here's Middle Line right here.
So this is north of Middle Line.
Yeah, north of Middle Line.
Okay, there's a sand line.
Yep, and there's a sand line. This is the property in question, I think. That's better, so you can see there where it lines up with the existing town open space. So we have a pre-app report for this one, let me just open that up here. Do you, I, I left them a copy for everybody yesterday, do you have them?
Yes.
Okay, if you don't, I'll provide one.
Definitely.
So it's a three lot standard plan, as I, let's go back and show you. One lot, which would be an oversized lot in the R80 zone. It's also, uh, aquifer protection overlay district and archaeological sensitive area. So they're showing an oversized lot containing all the, most of the existing improvements, a vacant lot, which would be lot number one over here. And then a second vacant lot over here has some of the existing driveway that serves the existing residents located in there. But it would, they're proposing a three lot standard plan. Back to the report here. Yep, Aquifer New York. So it's just over seven acres in the two acre zoning aerial, that's the map. Uh, they submitted a standard plan and it shows that, um, everything conforms, so there's no debate about the yield. We did note there is, just bear with me, I'll show it here, it's easier. There is an old trustee road that's shown here to the south of the property. There's old historic information on record that shows that the trustee road, as you can sort of see, it sort of was mapped out. And the portion does traverse this property. So you'll see that in my report, I, I asked for clarification, either show it on the map if it's still there or provide the necessary title certification to show that it doesn't exist.
The map shows the ownership by Skivoni.
Yes, that's why, that's why I raised the question, because Dave and I, Dave Wilcox and I talked about it, because we were looking at the old historic maps. Still show it as a trustee road, so they'll have to provide whatever information. You know, but you're right. Back here, I'm sorry. And so, like I said, it shows it, and if it needs to go on the map, it would have to come out of yield, but it doesn't look like it would affect the total amount of yield. As, as we obviously have an oversized parcel in there. They didn't submit a plan, development plan, and we had discussed this, or you and Matt had discussed this at the time. And so while it looks like this is a hard map to get 50, you need a minimum of 50% open space here. If you take these two vacant lots, they themselves are, don't equal 50% of the property. And most of the improvements are pretty sprawling here. So it's sort of difficult to accomplish that in this case, so I'll, when I get to my recommendations, we could take a look. I met with the trails advisory, who I think had a very good recommendation here. It's an unlisted action under SECRE, so this says a short environmental assessment form should be submitted. It's, it's got to be a long environmental assessment form. And you have to do the archaeological study as well, because it's in the New York sensitive area. It's a minor review under the town code, it's not subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, there's nothing specific about this property. I would say the, obviously comprehensive plan talks about clustering, open space, trail links and the like. So to the extent that we could incorporate some of those into this map to comply with that. Again, we don't have an open space plan, but a minimum of 50% would be needed. And that's needed in order to qualify with the minimum and to get the benefit of the zoning relief that the planning board. So you don't provide the minimum, even if the lots become smaller, you have no ability to, to do that. So, um, so that was one issue. The park requirement is assessed, you have one existing residence, so in this case, it would be assessed on the, or be based on the assessment value of the neighborhood, which is currently set at 15,000 and change for each lot. So the park fee absent providing a trail easement would be just over $30,000 for this application. We had a public hearing in June and it was followed by a 10 day comment period with no comments. This says here, planning board, this is a density incentive PRD plan, that's a mistake, so I will fix that. I think that what I would say here is the plan would prefer either a PRD plan or some other plan, and we'll talk about the trails advisory, that would provide some buffers to the town's open space and provide a trail link. And I'll show you what, what they came up with. We did referrals to the various agencies and I've incorporated the comments here. The engineers are recommending a couple of things, removal of some encroachments that are in the town's right of way. And maybe getting a, this is a portion of Millstone Road, so this is a part of the, I reckon this portion should be dedicated to the town. So I put that in the report, so the applicant is, is aware that that comes out of Tom's office. They want to have future debate about that, we could do that, but we're just going to make the requirement, you know, conform to the engineer. And of course, this is going to be subject to a SWIP and then the three inch rainfall and some removal of some split rail fence and hedges in the right of way. Pretty typical. And then it said that we could address this before signing the maps. So nothing major, the conservation board came back with comments. They noted that the, um, the ponds are lined in the not regulated wetlands. But the DEC came back and said that they do in fact regulate the wetlands there, so I'll, we'll go through that as well. So yes, they note that they are regulated by the DEC. This talks about open space to the north and east, given the town land there, so we will, we'll go there. They talk about the slope easements, there are some excessive slopes in here, they don't come out of yield when the lots are over 80,000 square feet. But perhaps as part of the, some buffering and trail easement, we could incorporate that. The limits of clearing need to be properly shown and indicated. The first, the lot there where it shows the existing improvements has historically been cleared since the 60s and 70s on those aerials. But what we normally do is if you're entitled to any pre-existing clearing before you come over your final, we would say, go to the chief building inspector and get a pre-existing determination. So that way the final map would have the, you know, accurate numbers on there. And if it's over cleared, then, then it would be addressed. They, they talk about a common driveway plan for the two lots, but we're going to talk about that as well. The IA systems are required now, so that will go on the map. And then there's the long eared bat within, currents within 1.5 miles. From the conservation board, Department of Public Safety noted that there's water mains and fire hydrants. The New York State DEC did come back and say they do regulate the wetlands there. The subdivision of land is not a regulated activity, so they're not going to approve the subdivision map, so let me say that. But construction activities, as they say in there, a common driveway, any of that stuff would be subject to a wetlands permit. So, so it's noted, and then of course, they noted the, the long eared bat situation. And of course, they'll be clearing limitations and windows that they're allowed to clear as part of that. That's the DEC. Trails Advisory Board, so let me just. One of the trails, I actually was at the meeting, I, I met with them. Given the existing improvements, okay, what, what they recommended, sort of, because you have a, you know, tennis court here, absent removing structures, so we're trying to work within, you know, the existing. They were recommending like a 25 foot buffer along here and then a 25 foot buffer along the rest of it, because that's all adjacent to the town's open space. And then some type of 100 foot wide, um, uh, open space buffer that comes down to Mill Road. Their point is to have the open space connection from Mill Road to the town open space, which then could ultimately connect to the Palmonoff Trail. So basically, it's just what they're looking for is a new trailhead location.
I can almost see a larger, I, I mean, I'm looking at the topo.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And to try and get a larger buffer on that lot one, to try to capture a lot of those slopes.
Yeah.
And maybe a smaller one.
Might as well on this line here, right?
Yeah, in other words, you're saying make a, a larger buffer up there, because that's where the slopes are, and then something narrower here.
Do you have to see the topo, George?
Yes.
Yeah, try and catch, catch some of that.
I don't have it for me, but the map that I drew up actually had about 100 foot buffer up here.
Yeah.
Probably 50 on the side or something.
I, I mean, I, I think you'd always go narrower, you know, 20 foot.
25, okay.
And with a larger one in the back, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. Again, the key here is that mostly from the trails advisory board perspective is.
Yeah, they just want to get.
Absolutely cluster, it lets, lets us get some type of connection so that we could get from Millstone. And I think that's a good idea, so I'll revise the report to, to, sort of, maybe we'll just do a consistent 25 around and then we'll increase it here.
Now, um, do they, how does public get, get access to that strip though?
Well, that's, that's part of the report, you'll see that I say in there, trail easements in favor of.
Or dedication as part of their park fee?
Yes, we leave those options open, yeah. So if you go to the comments, the first highlighted one was what we just discussed. So in the alternative of doing a cluster plan, I think we could do a plan with easements, as we were talking about, that, that, you know, or open space that would provide the access. So then number two, as we always recommend, we can't require it, but town's got some money to spend, so it is adjacent to town, open space. I always recommend that they go talk to our good friend Jackie Fendlin, see if there's any opportunities for preservation. You never know. Well, it worked with Camp Jerome, so. And that whole thing is being preserved now, so. So they could do that. I'd say compliance with the, the town engineer. If anybody wants to argue about recommendations to expanding, you know, road and providing easements, they could do so at a later date, but we normally just incorporate the rest.
Now, they're going to use a historical access for both lots.
Well, yeah, we're going to get to that also, yeah, for sure, for sure. I also say on the road frontage there, we could provide a 25 foot naturally vegetated buffer along the road frontage for all three lots. Cause it is wooded up there and it's nice, so I would do that. Number five talks about the clearing. Again, go to the chief building inspector, get your pre-existing determine, determination, whatever the numbers are, they are. And then if we need to re-vegetate, we, we do it as part of the final, that they would have to re-vegetate. Number six talks about the 15% slope, so as we know, we don't exclude them from yield, but we could incorporate them in an easement that'll protect them, so that's good. Number seven talks about the wetlands requirements from the DEC, so they will have to go to get permits for any construction. Eight talks about the long eared. Eight talks about the long-eared bat requirements, so that'll be incorporated into the property. Now, let's talk about this driveway real quick, because it's sort of, I've already told the applicant, there's, you know, the planning board's not going to allow an access on this bend here, that just seems dangerous at this stage of the game. There is a driveway here, and it could serve, obviously, Lot 2 and 3, it's not easy to accomplish, you know, but I think that the access for Lot 1 back here should still come off of the existing common driveway, and across, I just don't see putting it over here as being good.
Dangerous curve.
It's a dangerous curve.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Anthony, because that has been a concern I had in, you know, previously, you know, working for the town. There is a regulation that I think at subdivision roads, they're required to have adequate line of sight in the town code. Now, that's not defined, and one day I'd like to maybe work with everybody in the town board to define that. Common driveways, although they're not officially a road, I'm glad you're sharing that same concern, because Millstone and some other roads are, you know, are an issue.
No question about it. You know, then the question is, you know, depending on where it's located in here, does it require additional clearing? It may, and so we could deal with that at the time, you know, but I just think that we should just do a common driveway. It just makes more sense.
And then the new trailhead access would have parking elsewhere, or how would that work?
Oh, you mean for the trail itself? I'm sorry, say that again.
Yeah, because the trailhead would come off Millstone.
Yeah, I mean, we could just provide, there would be nothing there, it would just, it basically provided the open space area that if the Trails Advisory Board decides to blaze through, provide enough access, it would just simply for foot traffic to come up Millstone.
You just park along the side of the road.
Sometimes they start at another trail, and this is just a continuation, they cross the road.
Yeah, that's right. So it was a pretty solid recommendation, I think. So that was the driveway recommendation. Additional clearing, I just noted, I wanted to mention, that it may require additional clearing. You have that ability, if we, you know, in some give and take with an applicant, if we got to put in a driveway to have it safer, we might have to look at re-vegetation somewhere else, you know, so I just wanted to leave that open. This is an unlisted action, they got to submit the long DAF form, as well as a New York's, as well as an archaeological report. And then number 11, and Gloria has mentioned this many, many times, because we have kept mentioning our overlay district, effective July 1st, 2021, IA systems are required, period. I don't have to do anything yet, and they need Health Department approval to proceed with the final.
Where's the park fee? How do we, is it going to be the park?
The park fee is 15,000 and change per lot, or, and I could put this in here.
Yeah.
In the alternative, a dedication of a trail easement to the town could satisfy the park, and that easement would be larger than what the minimum park area would be, so that would be okay.
I mean, they did a dedication, would that Lot 1 still meet zoning size? If they want to, to?
That's something we got to look at, Dennis.
Is that right? My copy's too small.
Yeah. You know, it's, I think that, you know, it's a recommendation, applicant's going to go back to their design professionals, here's what the town came up with, but there could be an issue.
A lot of times, they just, they want, they'll dedicate that strip, because they don't want the liability.
And that's what the recommendation will.
As long as we can create that lot that's large enough.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, maybe they could adjust some of the lots, you know, in the middle there.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's accurate.
So the language in the park fee will be dedication or easement?
Yeah, in lieu of payment.
Payment, yeah.
Yep. And that will be the recommendation, because we prefer that, actually. Anybody else have any?
I think it's pre-application, right?
Yep.
Okay, then, do we have a motion to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, tie, yes.
And then I have the next one, and I didn't do a resolution on this, I'm sorry. This is actually just setting the performance bond estimate for Lewis Road PRD, we got the, engineer gave us the performance bond estimate.
Should we ask the number?
Yes, I'll tell you, the performance, well, it's a third of the cost, so.
No?
It's the whole amount, not one-third.
Yeah, it's performance, the whole amount.
The maintenance bond would be one-third.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So I was just going to make sure you got that correct.
How many zeros are we looking at?
The?
SpaghettiOs.
12,006.
The total cost of improvements is 12,689,987 dollars.
Correct.
The performance bond, you said, is represented as a third of that.
No, no, performance bond is the full amount.
Oh, it's the full amount, and a third of the original, forgot, gotcha, gotcha.
Would be the maintenance bond amount.
Yeah, I don't know why they didn't say that in here.
Nice try, though, Anthony.
They actually didn't say that.
No, they put that on the bond estimate, I think that is ultimately the, for the maintenance, setting the maintenance bond amount at a later date.
Right. Gotcha. You know, I did this at the last minute, Wayne, might I sun next time and confirm the numbers?
No, that is the number, though, and do you have the bond estimate?
I do. The perform, they have the fee amount at 855,345.53.
Yeah, and that's representative of seven and a half of the 12 million.
Yeah. And then the total cost of improvements, it says 12,689,987 dollars, and then it says, in parentheses, one-third of the original performance bond amount is 4,229,996 dollars.
Yeah, now, one-third is only for the future purpose of setting your maintenance bond amount.
Gotcha. So it's 12,689,987 dollars.
Correct.
That's the number that I have to put in the resolution.
Exactly.
So I have to correct my statement here. The review fee is set at 855,345.53. The performance bond, the cost estimate, is 12,689,987 dollars.
Anthony, do you think they're going to do it in-house, or they're going to farm it out to an engineering?
My guess is that it's going to be both.
A lot of work.
Yeah. My understanding is it's going to be a higher.
Yeah, I think when Tom was there, of course.
He indicated, yeah.
With oversight from town staff.
Okay.
So just to get that number correct again, on the record, 12,689,987 dollars.
Great, do we have a motion?
Does it use it today?
Motion.
Motion by Craig. Second, performance bond.
Sure.
Second by George, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, success, set to me, performance bond.
That's correct. I do it for the fun of it.
I think, is clear, do you have anything else, Anthony? Because clear is not here.
Hold on, real quick. I'll go in order. Number 12, High Dunes Condominiums.
Okay.
Easy enough, it's just two. This is in West Hampton, on Dune Road, here's the aerial up here, there's a whole bunch of strange condos up and down this stretch. This is High Dunes Condominiums, it's basically one building here, as you can see, with multiple units. They submitted a pre-submission conference, and it's really hard to see on the maps, but they're going to be re-siding, doing some new windows with the existing building, redoing the decks in the front, and then redoing and expanding the decks in the back as part of this whole thing. So it's a pre-submission conference, they did submit plans, sort of hard to read, but, you know, for each of the units, showing what they're doing, and they also submitted elevations. Looks like it's going to be some type of hardy plank material, but it's a pre-submission conference, it's on the ocean, you know, I know they're dealing with the coastal erosion stuff as well, so, because the last thing we want to have is another debacle on an application, where we approve it as a site plan, and they go to get a building permit, and the department says you need to lift the whole thing, so we'll address that as part of the pre-submission. So I would recommend submitting the pre-submission conference for February 9th.
February 9th, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, I oppose, extensions.
Anthony, there are seven public hearings scheduled based on the data for two, not February 9th.
I have one more, so what's the second meeting in February?
23rd?
I mean, that seems like a very heavy.
Are you okay with the 23rd? Okay, we could do, can we reset it then for February 23rd?
Okay, we're retracting, we're amending the motion to change from February 9th to February 23rd, do we have a motion?
For which one?
High Dunes.
High Dunes Condominiums.
High Dunes. Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor, I oppose, extensions, six yes, and a 23rd. Should we catch Gloria?
Well, I was making notes, and I'm writing February 9th down, and down, and down, it's like.
At least somebody's keeping track.
Well, Jackie normally would do that.
Is Daphne going on Zoom?
Daphne?
Because I have Rothman, number 17 is Rothman.
Oh, 17, okay.
I'll make this simple, because it was Rothman Dynasty here, this was one, this was Jackie's.
Just with all those wetlands, too.
With all those wetlands. You might recall, there's a covenant amendment involved to allow for the two-lot subdivision. Planning Board sort of put off, considered, they had the hearings, but they sort of put off dealing with it, because you wanted to see, again, this was Jackie's, to make sure that the applicant came in, my understanding is, with a cluster, or an open space plan, which they did, you know, with the two lots in the front, and then all the open space in the back. We're deeming the application incomplete, because the pre-app was incorrect, it stated that it was an unlisted action, but this is actually in the ag overlay district, so it's a type 1 action, so I've already advised Daphne that she's got to submit the long EAF form for that. Also, wetlands permit application, they have to submit that in the fee, so sure, the wetlands board in this case, you would be issuing the three-year wetlands permits for the properties. So until we get that, we would deem the application incomplete.
Complete, very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, and all in favor, I oppose, extensions, we have six yes.
Also, another Jackie's, Chicken Brier Hill, remember this one?
Oh, yeah.
We came in with the final application, this was one, let's see here, where we located, this is the one that's in East Ford, it's the R20 zoning district, they're looking to do a four-lot plan, this is on North Bay Avenue, got some town open space. My reading of everything was, there was obviously some drainage concerns that come down the middle of this, I believe, if I remember correctly, because they came with a four-lot plan, and the planning board wanted a cluster open space plan to, you know.
Daphne just walked in.
We went through your stuff already.
For real?
Yes. Go out there, I'll talk to you in a minute. So this is the plan, does this look familiar to the board at all?
Yeah.
There was, you know, because there's a.
This was the one where they were going to make some sort of drainage underneath the driveway?
That I don't remember, Kate, to be quite honest.
Yeah, because there was like agricultural land, and there was drainage coming off.
There is, there's drainage coming off, and so, you know, looking at the planning board, the planning board looked at, it was requested that they incorporate the open space area through the center of the property to include, what it said in there was this sluice way.
Yeah, if you look at the overhead, I think, and they were saying that it's a common driveway, and there was some kind of like.
There's going to be a common driveway here, yeah.
And they were putting some kind of drainage pipes underneath that common driveway, right?
I totally don't remember this at all.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm taking the haze off as well.
I remember Chicken Brier, because it's an odd sounding application, but I don't remember the details at all.
Yeah, Jackie took this over, so, you know.
So that's Bay, and Bay and what, what's running to the south?
North Bay, this is East Pond.
East Pond.
It's hard to see, but the, you know, it was basically, my reading of the pre-app was that it was, see, that you have the town open space down here, so my understanding was, is that the drainage is, you know, is coming down, the sluice way goes through here, and you wanted to sort of link up what was existing open space, and to capture, I guess, the issue of the drainage area of this property. That just, some of the board members don't remember it, I guess. Nevertheless, they came in with, you know, the application materials, Health Department's approval, and so I was just going to recommend deeming complete, so I could do my referrals to engineer, because I want the engineer to really look at this.
Yeah.
And I was going to recommend the hearing for February 23rd.
Yes, that's the second one we're, now we have five.
So I would recommend deeming complete and scheduling the hearing.
Schedule him, February 23rd, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, six yes, and what else you got?
I'll just do, real quick, number 20 is an extension for submission of the final maps, another project I took over, it was a lot line modification, so we're extending this.
What?
I'm sorry.
What's the name, what's the name?
Paris Project Management LLC.
P-R-I-Z, not to be included with Paris.
That's right.
Paris.
It's a little retroactive, because I took this over, so I'm recommending that we do an extension for submission of the final maps, it's actually from September 18th, 2022, until March 17th, 2023.
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, six yes, and how about Firestar?
That's, I'm just waiting for the final stuff, Wayne gave me a letter today, we're just going to do an extension from January 10th, 2023, until April 10th, 2023.
Good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, six yes.
The only other one I have, he's not here, is Joe Goss is on number 26.
He was here.
He was here.
He left with Claire.
He left with Claire.
Claire kidnapped him.
It's vicious.
Wayne's going, he's out here.
You're good, here's on the 23rd.
I know, I can't, I was watching it, I can get on Zoom, can you make it the line? I can't do the 23rd.
Okay, which application was this again?
Chicken Brier.
Chicken Brier, okay.
I tried to.
What's our first one in March?
Mike, 9th, the 9th, March.
March 9th?
March.
How's March 9th?
Okay.
Okay, so our action then is to amend the public hearing for Chicken Brier from February 23rd to March 9th, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, I oppose, extensions, six yes, and?
All right. I've been putting poor Joe off since July.
That's called fast track.
And he's been made, it's fast track.
It's only January.
So this is a situation, this is Ocean View Park Map, 105, Section 1, it's 467 Great Hill Road in North Sea, let me show you the aerial, it is a.
What number are you in?
26.
26.
26, lady and gentleman, I'm sorry. Where's my aerial? Where's my aerial? Little out-parcel in the middle, these are all skewed, this is a development section that the planning board opened up, and basically, we got an application to build on the property, the property's in the CR 200 zoning district, so Joe was bringing in a whole bunch of development rights, if you saw from that.
A list that long.
A list that long. The gist of it is this, under the town code, typically you want it from the same school district, that's the way it works, the town code does allow you to consider up to 50% outside of the school district, which is what Joe was doing. Am I right, Joe? So far I got this right?
Yes. Great.
That's great. And so basically, that very lengthy resolution, and it is, and I thank Joe for sitting down with me, going through each and every one of his certificates, I have them, to help me come up with this, using Jackie, Jackie Fenland did an excellent job with this back in the day.
I was just going to say, this was with Jackie, where she'd have to be adding up all those.
Yeah, fractional development.
Fractional development rights, and I've talked to Dave about this, so basically, you'll see in the resolution that we broke down each where as a development right, where it's coming from, the amount of development right it's equal to, and the square footage. All the numbers add up, you're more than welcome to take your calculator, but I've But I've done it many, many times over, so I'm basically recommending approval of the request to build on this property, four, six, seven, Great Hill Road. Subject to, well, you can see it here, to the transfer of all the development rights and the redemption of all the certificates, filing of same, and, you know, to be executed by the planning board. Beyond that, I don't think there's much to do with this.
Water, electric, public water.
Everything's there?
All there.
And you all approved it, so we'll take all those little development rights, Joe will give all the originals to me, we'll get them signed, no, don't give them to me. And we'll, and.
If I need to sign, I'm here, I can sign.
Okay, oh, I will go through them.
I'll do it after, yeah.
I'll make sure, but you want to approve the resolution?
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, we have six yes. And one absent. And you have something else, oh, that's Claire has another one.
Yeah, just, I have my maps, Cordez, Family, and Sean Dunn were signed.
Okay, we're acknowledging item twenty-eight for signature.
And twenty-nine.
And twenty-nine for Sean Dunn.
Hang on a second.
Lauren, have you signed anything else?
I signed Cordez and I signed Southampton Farm Supply. Sean Dunn is there and I don't know where it's supposed to be signed.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Item thirty is acknowledged on the record. You haven't signed Paul Sinelli then, right?
I, it's not there.
It's not there. Good, then we'll acknowledge it. Jeff, welcome.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. Where are you taking us to? Are you going in order, Jeff, or?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is your first one?
Eighteen oh sixteen. Oh, fourteen.
Discrepancies.
Yeah, but that's further down.
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
I didn't do anything yet.
Oh.
Yeah, I think a state of battle.
Are you going back in order then, or?
Jeff's here.
Jeff's here, okay, Jeff, take us somewhere, anywhere.
All right, so we'll start with number fourteen, I'll knock out all the site discrepancies. There are two of them that didn't make the packet, so if you notice the discrepancy there, I have them here.
Okay.
Just open them up for you. All right, so we received a three lot subdivision application, pre-application. The applicant's representative, Carl Benacasa.
Jeff, could you just tell me the name of the application?
Yes, Wilderness Trail.
Okay, because I've got notes without numbers.
Gotcha.
So.
All right, proposed three lot subdivision, so three hundred ninety-two thousand, actually a larger, a larger subdivision. Subdivision is proposed with a road reverter, which should provide access. Let me open this up for you.
My note says this was a landlocked parcel.
Yes, it is currently a landlocked parcel. The adjoining subdivision has a road reverter for future road opening. Flip this over for you. So yes, it is a landlocked parcel, but right here, the subdivision titled Salt Wood, Salt Weed. They have provisions in their covenants and restrictions for future road opening. It's a fifty, fifty wide, fifty-foot wide common driveway, I believe.
And so it's a road.
It's a road. If you look at the aerial. Let's get you there. There we go. So this is a subdivision map, and I have to flip it for you. There you go, I think it gets, you can view it better this way. One more time.
You get the gist.
Perfect, there we go.
I will take this one.
Sure, do it, George.
Do you want me to come up or?
Sure. Okay, so.
Sure, Carl.
So if you see here. The subdivision back in nineteen eighty-three lands of Frank Bayer's Jr. established this road reverter. The applicant would like to use this and open this up as their road.
So in other words, now it's a common driveway, it's dog legs.
Basically.
And then we could, so this is going to turn into a, but you have a reverter on them.
If you look at the, yeah, the aerial will show, it's one, essentially it's one common driveway that connects them. And it ends at about, see where that sort of cul-de-sac, that.
Yeah.
That's where it ends today. So we would be extending over those parcel three and parcel two on that subdivision map, the remainder of the road, which by right benefits the properties to the west.
Right. Oh, there's the aerial.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
So there's a recorded declaration.
I'm sorry, Carl, what's that, what's that road leading in?
So that's Wilderness Trail.
Okay, thank you.
So Wilderness Trail leads into these, and it's basically, the terminus of Wilderness Trail is questionable, but it technically terminates at the beginning of that four lot subdivision that you're looking at right there?
Yeah.
And then from there, there's a, what exists now is essentially a common driveway that connects, off of which connect the four lots. We would be expanding that common driveway pursuant to the road reverter that was recorded against the property to benefit this property to the west, the subject property. The neighbor, the parcel, I think it's parcel two, if I remember correctly, but the top left parcel, is actually fully aware of this and has entered it into agreement with the owner of the large, the subject parcel for an additional sixty feet easement over his property to provide access. Though I don't know that that's entirely necessary, given the road reverter.
And what, what road is accessing?
Wilderness Trail.
Wilderness Trail.
Which is a private road.
It's a private road, yes.
Just where?
See right there, you want to show, can you just, where the green is?
If you go down.
So just zoom out a little, Jeff, so you can see how they get access from, what's the feeder road? Oh, it's Watermill Town.
Horse farm on the right, as you're heading north, there's a big horse farm.
Okay.
Of course, this is across the street from that horse farm.
Okay, I just.
And right now it ends, and then there's a series of dog legs, which is what I'm hearing, that we have a reverter that could be turned into a road.
Correct, yes. The feeder road is Stephen, Seven Ponds Town is the feeder road.
And the big issue in that, that was Carl's, public water, do you have public water in Wilderness?
I don't believe we do, so we'd have to.
It would be wells.
What'd you say?
It would be wells.
It would be wells, yeah.
Be wells, is the Health Department approving wells?
I've seen them approve for small, minor subdivisions wells.
Because we had a three lot map on Great Hill Road, where they had to bring public water all the way up from Major's Path up the hill.
I think there was another application off of Watermill Town.
Watermill Town, a little further north of you, and they didn't have it in. So, and then the other big issue you run into is fire protection.
Yeah.
Fire district now wants, so have you looked at the Health Department?
Yeah, we have begun to look at that, and that's certainly part of our consideration.
That could be an issue.
Those surrounding homes are not on city water?
No, not at all. It's one of the frustrating aspects of this area. Now, they are doing main extensions in the area. It'd probably be best to touch base with the Water Authority.
See where their closest one is, yeah.
I mean, this is very recent, within the last couple of months, I've become aware of some water main extensions in the area. They might have some plan for your area. I know River Circle Farm just south of you had, they brought water into that, those, those lots, so.
Because the fire department is going to want a, a fire hydrant.
So the other issue that we're discussing is, if we do a three lot subdivision, we have a lot with issues, even with, with. Flag poles, with flag lots. So we have a, one proposal, I don't know if you want to put it up, is to have the, there's a two lot, that's the two lot plan, and that's fine. One would be to have an easement. We could either have two flag poles with reduced width, obviously we would need a variance for that.
Sure.
Or there's easement, which, you know, we'll talk about with council as to how best to effectuate that easement. And whether or not the additional square footage we're getting from the neighbor by virtue of the promised easement could accommodate the frontage required.
What's the zoning there?
Zone here is.
CR-200. Two hundred?
The lot sizes would conform to CR-200, but we do run into the issue with frontage.
Yeah, that, yeah, the lot size conforms, it's just a lot, yeah, the frontage.
You have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Kind of routine. There's no open space opportunities there, right?
Unfortunately, open space would, though, them, would make the lots non-conforming.
Well, I'm thinking of the cluster plan, but there's no open space around there, is there?
No, to, to the west is a private property.
How does that parcel to the west get access, actually?
They all get this, like this spider web network of. Of private roads and flag lots.
Yeah. Yeah. That parcel to the west, is it developed or?
Yeah, it's developed here and extends.
Extends.
All the way down here.
Okay, so they have access, where do they have access, off Great Hill?
I believe it's off Great Hill, y'all. Most of these are long flag lots, makes that older to Great Hill.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about any access issues, there's open space connections, so we can go with standard plan, full-size lots. And this is going out to pre-application?
Correct.
Okay.
So we propose.
Do we have a date of February twenty-third?
February third, let's see.
I know that is President's Week, so a lot of people are going to be away.
I think we have February ninth.
Yeah.
We're loaded on the ninth.
Twenty-third.
We'd rather go with the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Although we'll probably load up the twenty-third.
No, we're not that bad.
No?
I'm keeping track.
Good, very good, Gloria. Okay, so Carl, is the twenty-third good for you?
Twenty-third's fine.
Great, do we have a motion to de- pre-application, please? And set the application for the hearing for the twenty-third? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, we have five yes and two absent. All right, just talk to the Water Authority and the Health Department, Carl, in the meantime.
I will. So you haven't seen this with wells, because we have.
I don't know if the health, I know in Great Hill they weren't.
I haven't seen them, okay. Because I've seen other ones, but, all right, I will certainly talk to them right away.
Individual lots they have, because, but on subdivisions.
For minor subdivisions.
Yeah, it's a three lot map, and I'm surprised, it was an extensive water main, right up, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, they wanted like a thousand foot water main.
Yeah.
All right, so a thousand feet, okay. All right, I will certainly vet that with you.
That, that, that puts a big wrinkle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People just wait.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, George.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks.
Great, yeah.
So we'll continue, number fifteen, which is fourteen Flying Point. This one is proposed two lot subdivision. This one was, this application actually was before the Landmarks Historic Review Board, there was a historic structure there, the Diamond House.
Diamond House, yeah, that's the cover of the Southampton Press today.
Yes, yes, it did. And they are proposed to move this to lot one.
We did an advisory report. Now, they're moving the house or they're?
They've already moved the house, yes.
They moved the house, yeah.
The work, they've actually been granted building permits to relocate the structure and also to build a new house on the larger piece, parcel two.
Was that the lot being created yet?
No.
They're already, they're almost done.
Depending on the planning board's comments and.
Okay. But right now it's one parcel, correct?
Right now it's one parcel, but it's under construction both.
How did they get a permit? How did they get a Health Department permit?
Not sure.
Amazing how things work.
It's magic.
But yeah, the, it was an extensive review on the house itself, and I believe conjunction with the Landmarks Historic Review Board, also with a ton of ZBA approvals, they received, if you want me, I can go through the approvals.
I know we did an advisory report for them, you know, we were supportive of the.
Okay, good. So we here just say essentially deem it complete, and to set a public hearing date.
Is it pre-submission or?
Yeah.
It's pre-submission, right?
A pre-application.
Pre-application, okay, for the twenty-third?
For the twenty-third as well.
Do we have a motion? Kate is on the motion, we have a second, George on the second, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, six yes.
Yeah, Tom seconding over here, too.
Sixteen, fantastic.
Fantastos, proposed two lot subdivision in West Hampton.
We've got two, the twenty-third, and one.
The lots are undersized, this is located in R-40 zone, the proposed lots are thirty thousand two seventy-four, and lot two proposed at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-seven. There are no open space opportunities here either, as the surrounding area is pretty well-developed. The applicant is represented by James Hume.
Pardon me?
Want to present the board? We did review the standard plan, we deem it complete, but if Jim has any other comments, but the application does require zoning board approval for lot area.
That's correct, so we.
No, Jim, just identify.
For, for the applicant, James N. Hume from Kelly and Hume PC, three, two, three, Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, good afternoon, good to see you all. I adopt everything that Jeff just indicated, and only, only further comment that I would have is we have applied for the, to the zoning board, but we have not yet had it reviewed or scheduled. But it does need to really, obviously, for area.
For area?
Yeah, lot area.
Substandard.
How, how much are you sure?
It's in R-40 zone, and we're proposing lots of approximately thirty, so.
Thirty thousand.
So they're about thirty thousand each.
Yeah.
Three quarters.
Twenty-five percent. Yep. But then we think we can make a good case to the zoning board on that issue.
Are there pre-existing lot lines or what's?
No, basically, there's a quasi-residential, second residential use of the property, and also the neighborhood is very much smaller sizes.
You can see that.
Yeah, the character of the neighborhood, so. But we're still waiting to, we filed that at the same time we filed here, but we're still waiting to hear from them.
So we're going to do this as pre-application, Jeff?
Correct.
And you see the twenty-third, how we doing?
We can do the ninth, we're, we're fine now with the.
What, what happened to the ninth?
We've got.
We dropped a couple off?
We've dropped a few off.
Actually, I'd be traveling on the ninth, so.
You should have put the other one on the ninth, now you tell us.
I could take the twenty-third, that would be.
Take the twenty-third.
We have, we have three on the twenty-third, so that's fine.
So we're proposing the ninth?
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-third. Set in the afternoon or the evening?
That's in the evening at six PM, and the motion by Gloria?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, six yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you all, happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And Jeff, you have a.
I have another one that was kind of misplaced on this position in the uniform.
This is number nineteen.
Four and six, both, this is an interesting one. This lot was established, these two lots actually, four and six, they're located right off of Neuyak Road in Neuyak. There are lots, essentially there are single separate lots that were established back in nineteen forty-eight, so they predate zoning. But were held in the same name when they received their pre-existing CO, and has been in same name since. So they want to reestablish single and separate VS subdivision. Now, lot number six, or four, six, Oak, has an existing garage structure on it. And the main dwelling is at Four Oak Drive. They'll need variances for, as you can imagine, lot area. Uh, they'll need variances for, as you can imagine, lot area, um, and obviously, to re-establish single and separate, uh, they're going to have to either relocate the garage, uh, or demolish it.
Yeah.
Uh, the lot itself, they're proposing it at five thousand, two hundred and eighteen. Uh, there are some other lots in the area that are around six thousand square feet in size, this would, uh, unfortunately, be the smallest of them. Uh, and obviously, the, uh, Four Oak Drive Lot, uh, Tax Lot Thirty-One would be eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six square feet.
Yeah, then, I mean, that's, the, the ZBA, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, so they do have to present to the ZBA, uh, they don't have an application before the ZBA as of yet, I believe they're going through the same process that the previous applicant, um, is going through as well, as far as waiting.
So they're, they're keeping the old lot lines, they're not looking to?
Correct, it's the same lot lines as, uh, was previously, um, uh, provided to them. Uh, but of course, the garage, uh, proposed house, it's, it's, it's a tight lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a tight lot.
Well, what's the zoning that are, is it R fifteen?
Uh, the zoning actually is, I believe, R forty.
R forty.
Yeah.
The owner owns that, the house?
Correct.
On the left side of the street?
Yep.
Yeah.
They want to build us another single-family dwelling on the smaller lot, um, but realize they need to make the, each lot single and separate, so.
We, we got a lot of these, the ZBA does, too, you know, how they've merged with, you know, the zoning.
Exactly.
So, so our, our, uh, action is to deem it complete and
Set up pre-
You want to do the twenty-third?
The ninth.
The ninth? Oh, that's right, the ninth.
Can I hold the ninth for another project?
She, she's got the other target.
We've got one. I, I think we just have two now on the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, and three on the, on the twenty-third, and one on, in March, so.
Okay, so our action then on item nineteen is to deem it complete and set it for February ninth, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria?
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor, I oppose extensions, six yes, one absent.
So that goes to ZBA, like, does it simultaneously, like, or, or do they wait until our, our?
Yeah, they usually, some people go to the ZBA first, they, they typically, the ZBA tells them to hold off until we give our pre, pre-submission, then that becomes our advisory report to ZBA.
Okay, it almost seems counterintuitive.
Was it?
It almost seems counterintuitive, I almost feel like they should be at the ZBA first.
Well, as part of our report, we say you need ZBA variance to create this.
And, and we sometimes opine that we don't agree with the application.
We never embrace these, but the ZBA, they acknowledge the inherent hardship of lots merged under, it's kind of standard practice.
Last night, there was a, um, uh, New York State training webinar on, uh, on overview of the planning board
Number seven, that's my first one.
And, uh, next Wednesday night is an overview of the zoning board role.
Twenty, uh, page twenty-nine.
If you haven't signed up, I watched the one last night, it's very educational, I'm gonna watch next week's.
Would you share that in our, in our email?
Sure, sure.
That'd be great.
I was on last night, too.
Were you on last night?
Yeah.
So.
You can come over, we could popcorn, we could do the whole.
And, um, to that effect, there's, there's APA, which you guys are members of, every, almost every Friday at one o'clock is planning. Um, and they're live, and you can ask questions, and they're very informative, so
Every
I'll send you every Friday at one o'clock.
Is there a site where you can get credit?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure you could, if you want, like, a advanced credit, but they're very topical, you know, some of them are solar, they talk about everything that we're doing, you know.
So they're live at one o'clock?
Live at one o'clock, and then you can watch them afterwards, they always put them online, too, so if you want me to ask Janice, but I'll send you the link, and you're all members, so you could all sign up.
Yeah, thank you, Tara.
There, are you jumping back?
I want to jump back to number seven, uh, that's just an extension, that's page twenty-nine.
Madal Quomo?
Yes.
The old cave nightclub?
The, yes.
I'll probably use it back.
So the, the pre-submission report was adopted, um, on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, and, uh, they're asking for an extension until March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. They're working with the health department, so they just want an extension. The second, uh, resolved here would be to, um, authorize the abandonment of the underlying map, there's an underlying map on it, and that would typically, you would do at the final, but the health department's asking if it happens now, and I don't think you'd have any issues with that, so that's the second result.
They haven't got to final on that, huh?
No, not yet, no.
Okay.
Yes, but they, so they need their health department, and that's what they're waiting.
So our action is extend the pre-app.
Extend the pre-app to March twenty-fifth, uh, of this year, and then to authorize the abandonment of the underlying map.
Okay, very good, we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria? Second by Kate, all in favor, I oppose extensions, six yes, and we have Sabonic.
Sabonic Goffler, so we have in this case, um, this is on page thirty-five, uh, thirty-four is the resolution, which I've started. Um, so this is an addition, um, it's fifteen hundred and seventy square foot addition to the clubhouse, four hundred and eighty square foot second floor addition, storage addition, and a nineteen hundred and sixty-seven square foot clubhouse balcony addition to the clubhouse existing, so the plans are attached. Um, what I've done in this case is I didn't think there would be some public interest on, um, so I think I'm recommending expedited review, but I've come to the board to ask if we'd like to do this case. Um, I did do referrals to the fire marshal and town engineer and ARB, they all responded, town engineer had several conditions on it, but everybody else responded positively to the project, it is a type-two action. Um, and so this is your consideration, if you like the project, I would write the details up for probably the next meeting for you, for your consideration. The applicant's representative is here, if you have any questions. Um, let's say, and this is the clubhouse, now, I did, was thinking about this and golf courses. Uh, Sabonic was authorized through a PDB, and is very specific. Um, it did say that it thought about this in the future, if there's any expansion, it had to be limited to twenty-five percent of the footprints of any structure. In this case, the square footage is thirty-five thousand square feet, so what I just described to you is less than, you know, it's probably five percent of the full, but I'd like that included in the resolution in any case, so we have a running tally in case they come back in the future, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I like what's remaining.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, you can't see any of the buildings from
No, it's a very tasteful building, and, you know, you reviewed it initially.
No residential impact, so I think we're good with expedited.
Okay, great, so I'll write it up for the next meeting?
Next meeting?
Yeah, and just have all the specifics, the applicant's here, um, unless you're comfortable now, I can just put that right in there.
We can move it now, if you want. Any questions?
The applicant's here, they're the builders in this case, but they can answer any questions.
Just use the podium if you could?
Sure.
Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Paul Treffamovich, Sabonic Out Club. Uh, we're just looking to put an addition on the deck on the back, fifteen hundred square feet, uh, just, we're not gonna add any more, if you say at all on that there. All we want to do is just spread out the tables a little more, put a couple of loves, hates, rocking chairs in the back, and we're gonna do two small storage areas, uh, altogether, it's, uh, about four hundred and seventy-five square feet, just to put the cushions and everything in. It can't be seen from the road, it, uh, when I went to ARB, I showed, we're gonna match the building exactly the way it is over there, so that's all we're looking for right now.
I think the sentiment is to get to moving along with it.
We'd like to get done as soon as possible, just because the weather outside is great, and we open up in a couple of months, that's why.
It's the turn on a dime.
That's exactly it, that's why we're hoping we can get approval on this AP.
So Claire, I think we're comfortable moving, doing that, okay?
Typical conditions, town engineer, you know, affidavit, plans.
Yep, signed plans, and the fee. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria?
I'll second.
Second by George, all in favor, I oppose extensions, six yes.
Thank you very much, okay?
Hope the weather holds up.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Sunrise, at number nine?
Yes, I don't, I actually, um, they're not here, um, I'd like to take my applicant's, if that's okay?
Oh, okay.
Um, and then we'll jump back, if you don't mind.
Okay, great.
Um, which my applicant would be Mr. Gaza, right here.
Twenty-seven.
That is number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
And I don't have much in the packet, um, but I do have his letter, um, I'm gonna go do an overview here, and then Mr. Gaza can fill in here a little bit, and I also don't want, I do want to pull up, um, in this case, the aerial, which I think helps in this case. Let me just get the tax memo over in here. So essentially, planning board, uh, reviewed and approved development section, uh, back in nineteen eighty, uh, in this area. And that is the one that's been used for any development, um, off of, uh, Watermill Toward Road here.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, it's essentially the road, which is not built yet, we'll go through here, and we'll show you a plan of that. Um, in this case, um, oh, this is the one merged right here, right, so it's the lot next to it, right? This, this is where you mer, you want to abandon this road, or not open this road.
That's correct.
Okay, I do have a map, too, and I'll show you, go back and show you that.
No, there was a plan at one point to modify a lot of these lots, but that's
That's been abandoned at this point, yeah, so this is the original map, the plan, uh, this is seven, and then H, you can see, I'll go back to the aerial, but they've been merged, this was the road, he'd like to amend the map, so this road is not opened. Now, my concern with this, and any, or your concern with this, too, is you want to have, make sure all these lots, the south, even if they're town land or whatever, have access in the future.
Aren't those sending parcels?
They are, well, they've never really been part of a development section, but assumed on that fact is that they are sending parcels, because you've never reviewed a map to any development in this case, am I correct, Joe? And you, why don't you sit up?
If you were mad, come to the table, Joe.
Yeah.
Because we got the bikes now.
He's got a better map than he just showed us today, so.
Educate us.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Joseph Gazza, Five Bogged Lane Quag, I, uh, I develop old filed maps, maps which have never been approved by the planning board, which were dated back, filed with the county clerk, this one was dated nineteen-ten, before we were all born, way before. And I work with these maps, because they have problems, and I'm a problem solver, a resolver, and this particular map has, uh, showed the entire section of an old filed map, which has, uh, about twenty blocks, and inside each block is a tiny lot of twenty by a hundred, twenty-four lots, so it's thousands of lots, and the planning board, since I started doing this about forty years ago, has developed a lot of rules about regulating development on these maps, because they didn't have a chance of doing it in nineteen-ten, they want a chance of doing it today. So in nineteen eighty, I'll pass these three out, the planning board, on my earlier application, said we're gonna start reviewing this map, because Mr. Gazza wants to start development on this map, and it had certain elements which lent itself to development, it fronted on a paved road with utilities, and it had houses nearby on the Watermill Toward Road, and the planning board in nineteen eighty said we're only concerned with development, Mr. Gazza, on the north end of the map, because the south end of the map is really remote, and it's, you know, we have programs in place with transfer of development rights, which we talked about earlier, about lifting rights off of some lots to be able to build on other lots, and this is an example of that situation. So the planning board looked at this and said, we're gonna allow ten lots to be developed on the north end of this map, and the south end of the map, we anticipate using for the rights, the development rights, to be transferred up to the north end of the map. He says, the reason is that the town owns land to the south, the common dock trail goes through the south end of the map, and it's, the south end of the map is remote. But in nineteen eighty, the town designed a little road system, it's shown on this map, and they, they weren't sure about what was gonna happen, they anticipated that it would be a good idea to see this all preserved, but they left the door open, and they left this little piece of a road, which is shown with the, uh, orange arrow next to it, which
Another Ocean View Parkway.
Another piece of Ocean View Park, and
Where's the Ocean View?
Well, it exists in some places, and it's not really necessary today, because we have, uh, re-studied this map, and I've gone through this with the board a couple of years back, where I tried to do things with it.
Didn't we, didn't we just approve?
Yes.
Some houses?
Uh, on lots number three and nine, there's gonna be two homes.
Yeah.
And a road system was designed, as shown on
Yes, I can see this.
And the, the road, um, is a difficult road to build, it's designed to build, but it was accomplished.
A lot of hills.
Very healing.
The paper is on the mic. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Can you do that if the voice comes on?
I'll let Mr. Mutu, our engineer, take a look at the approved road plans, Mr. Mutu. And, uh, a road plan was developed.
A little bit of elevation and slopes to this, yeah.
To, to accommodate the ten lots, and the road plan does not go to the south. And one of the reasons is that, in the course of the last twenty years, I've already donated to the town about half of the land to the south for preservation, and I use this development rights up to the north. And now, I have applications with Mr. Wilcox, and indeed, which he's holding an escrow, for the balance of all of the lands to the south, with the exception of a couple of little pieces owned by
Oak Gentry.
Oak Gentry, from West Hampton. And I'm going to be donating these parcels to the town in order to use their development rights on approved parcels. And the trails people are very interested in this, because their trails go through the land that I'm offering to donate to the town, if I lift the rights off, I'm not just donating it to be a nice guy, I am taking the rights off.
Sure.
So this, this little piece of a road up over here is not necessary, and I'd like to include it in the approved development parcel seven, to make it bigger, also to eliminate, uh, front yards.
Combining those two lots.
I've already combined Lot, um, seven
And H.
Seven and H, yes. I've already put that together.
So you have one big lot there.
You abandoned the road between seven and H?
I have already, yes.
I thought that's what we were just talking about, Ben.
Seven and H.
Seven and H.
Seven and H, H.
Oh, H, sorry.
Yeah, you've abandoned this already.
Okay.
But this little piece of road called Ocean View Parkway, next to, uh, Block I, or Lot Number Seven, that's what I'd like to, with the arrow pointing towards it, I'd like to, uh, eliminate that as a road.
So seven and H are, are one, one lot.
Yeah, one lot now.
One lot now.
And that will have access off of this new pink road.
Off this pink road.
Correct, right on the corner, and then
So just that, could, okay, so, and I remember talking, maybe, when you were here, Joe, at a previous meeting, about how there aren't many, uh, properties left where you could transfer development rights off of in West Hampton. It was like a real shortage, so you've got Couple more here.
It's been a long haul for me to get these rights.
Right.
And, uh, I, I brought with me today, because I thought I was going to have a little presentation for the board, but Anthony took away all my steam, and, uh, you pass this around, I have been trying to acquire development rights for my life, and, uh, in the town of Southampton, they come from, you know, entire town. The problem with development rights is that the majority of maps are in West Hampton, the old filed maps, because that land was, was scrub land, didn't have much value, and developers in nineteen-ten bought land that had little value, scrubbed in nature, they cut it up into these old maps and sold it off to people all over the United States. The beautiful land in Southampton, near the water, and mecocks, or Remsenberg or West Hampton, they couldn't get their hands on it, it's too expensive. So that's why these old maps exist in areas that weren't as valuable.
Like North Sea.
Like there are a bunch of them in North Sea.
Where I live, so.
Yeah, in North Sea, uh, Henry H. Post, that was a, a woodland dealer, and he sold wood back in the early, you know, nineteen-hundred, nineteen-ten. And after he cut the wood off of the woodland, the land didn't have much value, and he sold the land to Donovan and other developers from Manhattan, who made old filed maps out of the woodland with no trees, because it was junk land.
Right.
So why am I, I'm going off on a tangent?
With nice road names.
I think you're amenable to it, here's my issue, and this is one of the standards, is you want to make sure that lots to the south have access.
Mr. Gentry's?
And so, Mr. Gentry, which is this parcel down here. So the rest of it is the town of Southampton lands. So the problem is, as you're saying, we spoke outside, you think there's access to the east, but there's not.
So, Joe, which lot on that is Oak Gentry's lot?
Uh, that one.
I can point to that, too. This lot right here.
And so that looks...
And the town lands, too.
He will need, he will need a tremendous amount of certificates to be able to...
Oh, he's not going to be able to develop. You're going to put that as a sending parcel. But it still, still has a right to go there. And so we don't want to prohibit that. And the town land to the south, this is park, this is walking trails and things like that. So what you were saying is that there's going to be access retained on this side, however, it's not. Here it's blocked, this is abandoned.
This goes into town land.
But this is all abandoned.
So how does he get in?
It's all town.
But town does not give him access to Oak Gentry.
That's because Oak Gentry's land is not developable.
Well, I understand, but he's, he's allowed to have access to his...
And so you're saying he, he can have access, or should he have access to people's roads that haven't been, that haven't been abandoned?
You've had conversations with Mr. Gentry?
I've tried and he's not responding. I tried to buy his land.
Luckily, we were outside and we were outside and Carl Linacasa represents Oak Gentry. So we spoke to him, but yeah. So this is, I am comfortable with this, as long as there's an alternate access and we identify that very clearly. If you abandon half of this, half of this would be still available, but they would not be able to abandon, eight would not be able to abandon it. So that might be another way to do it. But right now, this is merged in, it's town lands and...
It's impossible off of the map down, I guess that's to the north, for him to get access another way.
Well, this is the map. You want to do it from the map. This is all rights, they have rights of the road in the map.
Right.
So, yeah. There may be offsite, but this is part of the fundamental rights.
We have to focus on it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, as Claire mentioned, these streets have already been abandoned.
Right.
But the town hasn't in the past looked at old filed map lots.
This whole street is not abandoned to his property. None of this is fully abandoned. So he, this, this is, this I'm concerned with because that is fully abandoned on the east side, so.
The town also requires, in order for a lot to be even considered as a building lot, to be at least 30,000 square feet in area.
So that is not acceptable.
And these parcels do not meet that criteria. So their value is in their development rights. And the Planning Board has in the past actually landlocked properties by abandonment of streets because they are never going to be developed. An example would be off of, well, they have in the past, after studying and determining that the lots would not be suitable or even approvable for building purposes and that their value is in their rights. Everything is going to be town owned, I'm going to give it all to town, the exception of these little Oak Gentry cases.
There's only one, and so we'll get that clarified.
But if, if the town owns that property directly north and he's a member of, that, doesn't that suggest public?
Not if it's not a road. Not if it's not a road. If half of it was abandoned, yes, he'd still have the road to go over.
But can he traverse directly over town land?
If he pretends he's going there for a trail, but to access his property for his rights, I would be very suspect without, you know, getting our town attorney to weigh in on that.
Joe, which lot did you want to add that abandonment to, seven or eight?
Uh, seven. I want this little piece right here.
So, I mean...
Doesn't, doesn't affect this over here anyway, says, oh, this has been abandoned.
I guess one question is if you did half, afterrued his abandonment and added it to seven?
Then he can't merge the lot. You want to merge that.
No, no, no.
I've merged lots seven and five.
But eight would not be, you know, in that case, we wouldn't say no to eight to be abandoned, because that would be the access to Oak Gentry, which you could do. That would still have access.
Half an abandonment?
You get access.
Abandon, have to root, leave, leave half of the people root as access to Oak Gentry's lot down there.
Right, you could do that. Yeah?
On this map, where's Oak Gentry lot?
It's...
It's rooted on the south.
Yeah, it's, uh...
It's way down.
That's going to be...
But the preferable thing would be, now that you have contact with his attorney, Carl Linacasa, it may be a non-issue if we just, you know, pursue that, see if you can obtain that lot and then we could approve what you're proposing easily, right?
Or say if he's, if he's not interested, he doesn't care about access.
And then we can consider it, but I think that's, might be worth it, right? If you want to get that.
I tried. I'll speak to...
You reached out to Oak directly?
I called, I spoke to his secretary, he's not calling me back. I called, I've written him. You know, he knows who I am, I know who he is, we, you know, we're, it's like Gazza and Brody. It's sort of been the same deal. But now that Carl is on the, on the matter.
Right.
Carl will make, explain to Mr. Gentry that, you know, if you abandon the streets next to Mr. Gentry's property, you pick up a little extra area, a little extra rights, and his property would become even a little bit more valuable for its rights. And then he could get some of those certificates.
Well, I'm going to give these back to you now.
I have about 20 credits.
So let me, let me investigate that, but I think you're inclined to grant it either way, yeah.
I mean, do we have to act now or do we wait?
I'd like to investigate it. Yeah, because when I went this over with Dave, he said very clearly, you should leave access to parcels.
I can see that.
Yeah.
So to be clear, the only two uses for Oak Gentry's land are to transfer the development rights or for him to go look at the pretty trees.
Yes.
Okay.
Which?
Camping.
I know, well, he doesn't want to camp.
Well, either it's called glamping, so you didn't...
He's got a house there, but he's in North Sea now.
So one way or another, we'll regroup on this in the future.
Yes.
Okay. Just to conclude, if one looks at all my credits that I've been accumulating, 98% of them are from West Hampton. Because there's hardly any development right parcels left in Southampton School District, which is why, you know, I guess why you allowed me to use 50%. And, you know, it's Pine Barrens land, it's the same aquifer, it's valuable land to be protected, but it's just shifting it over a little bit. And in the West Hampton School District, there are, I think there's only two maps, old filed maps, that exist in areas that can be developed.
Yeah.
So there's no place to even use West Hampton rights.
By the byway, right, right down from the byway, but we're across the river tracks, you get Fitz Avenue and Brinkley.
Right, couple little...
But these can be used for sewage credit, if somebody is doing, is it the same one for one or...
Health Department hasn't recognized these.
Oh, really?
They recognize Pine Baron credits, but not town development rights certificates.
I didn't know that.
Now, they can be used for land clearing. However, the Planning Board has a policy that credits emanating from the West Hampton area, west of the Shinnecott Canal, should be used for clearing west of the canal. And if you want to clear east of the canal, you have to use credits coming from North Sea area, east of the canal, which is tough to get. So I've been holding some of these credits, you know, for 15 years. And I'm anxious to try to start using them now that I'm, you know, going to be 73 years old. I want to accomplish cashing these credits in. And that's why I'm trying to land them on some of my properties to use them while I can still do it.
Seventy is the new 50, Joe.
Well, I'll take my clothes off and you can play that position.
Wow. Let it go.
That's good.
From the air.
Well.
Dick, I'm at home.
I'm not, no, I'm leaving.
I guess we're done here.
Thank you for the time, Sharon.
Thanks, Joe.
Good to see you, as always.
Bye, Joe.
Claire, where are you taking us?
My next one is Sunrise at Spion.
Sunrise Spion, okay.
I had passed out a copy of this map plan, but just in case you didn't have it with you, here's another version.
Same as the one that's...
There's no action.
Same as the one, yes, exactly. So this is the site in Spion-Brumberg on Spion Riverhead Road, 1313. Very, very briefly, they want to do something similar to this, a smaller building on the south side with parking associated with it. So I do have the design, which is very standard Morton here. And I thought I had a site plan. I think the site plan gets kicked out every time I try to do it. Let me open it up though. There is a site plan on the project. So I prepared a, the staff report, and then I'm going to adopt it at the next meeting. So just briefly go over, it's 3,000 square foot footprint, 4,065 total. It's got a mezzanine in the, in the building. There was a pre-submission conference, December 8th, and no comments received during the conference or the 30-day written comment period. It is Central Pine Barrens compatible growth in APOD. They're proposing, they're taking the entire site and they're assuming that there's not existing clearing. So I just want to go back to the aerial real quick and I can open it up on GIS also. But you can see that there was some existing clearing, that's associated with the treatment of the plume adjacent to the property. And then this would be the runoff area that they had for the water that was treated. And so that caused this to be cleared. This, this occurred about 2013-ish, I don't see it in the 2010 aerial, but I see it in 2014. So I've gone to the site, this is really quality. Woodlands here on the fronts and this is very clear, but there's quite a slope here. So my, one question I brought up is whether, and this is number two, is whether you'd want to maybe tuck it into the back because that's the existing clearing. You know, I haven't talked to the applicant about this yet, rather than disturb area fronts. So that may be something you want to consider. This is, again, the site plan here. But this is, this is a little bit flatter here, and then there's a slope right in the middle. So it might be logistics of planning the property. They're doing outdoor storage, special exception, of course, the town engineer, it's an unlisted action, the size of the building, some additional parking may be necessary for the storage. The architecture, they don't, it's not much to speak of in terms of architecture. Typically, we just kind of dress up the front if it's visible from the road, but again, if it's tucked in the back, it may be a moot point. So that's that. They need to indicate a dumpster, the parking is sufficient, just the ADA space needs to be eight feet wide. They provide a fire lane around the building, which I'm not quite sure why it's proposed, but it may be required. And then screen mechanicals, the lighting, and then we talk about, I talk a little bit about this Spion solvent plume. In this case, most people don't put basements, there's no basements on this road, so.
Do the other buildings around it have a fire lane?
No. No, but it may be, I'm thinking it might be appropriate if it was any type of wooden building because of potential for fires in the Pine Barrens, but it was interesting. You can see it, it's on the site plan, that they have a fire lane along the whole building, so. And I'm sure the Fire Marshal will have some comments on that. So, yeah, that's, I just, all on the issues. We could adopt it today, if you're inclined. The applicants, or we can adopt it at the next meeting.
Did they do anything to dress up the architecture or is it...
No, not yet, but yes. In the architecture, do you want me to say more? The proposed building will be reviewed for A or B. Colors and materials should be noted, which is not. Do you want to say something about the architecture?
Yes, just, you know, attention should be, you know, paid for augmentation to incorporate residential elements. You know, usually they do that split stone facade and a couple of, you know, just so it doesn't look like a big metal box.
What does the one next to it look?
They pretty much look like big metal box.
Right, I was going to say, maybe it's, it's like lipstick on a pig.
You know, West Hampton, the glass, they, they're not pretty nice. Landros Building is there, Chipset Evergreen is along that street.
They all have like a feature, just breaks it out.
Yeah, right, right next to this building. It's a big metal box.
It was a big metal box, okay, that's, that's before I arrived.
Across the street, across the street is, what is it, West Hampton Glass?
Yeah.
And that building's beautiful.
That's beautiful, isn't it?
Yeah, that would turn out really nice, yeah.
Yeah, the showroom there, everything, wonderful.
Do we throw in solar and electric vehicles, Gloria?
Yeah.
So, yeah, with that change, I can, we can adopt it if you like.
Okay, so we can adopt this. It's good. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, aye, ayes, abstentions, six yes. And Jeff, take us through these clearings.
Oh, do I have the one from two?
Oh, you've got one more.
I have two completenesses.
Oh, completeness? Are these walk-ons or...
Nope, they're on number 11 and 13.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Subonic.
Sorry. Another subonic.
Subonic, okay.
Page 48. This is one you had a pre-submission not too far, long ago on. And they have submitted a site plan. It is complete, except the town engineer had some changes that they needed to do. So I'm going to deem it incomplete pending the town engineer.
Okay, motion for incomplete?
Yep.
Motion.
Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor, aye, ayes, abstentions, six yes. And then you have Puccio on the mat, item 13.
Yes, exactly. That is page 56, by the way. That one is complete. You had already done SECR, because this is one that went to the zoning board appeals for the wayward parking. And so in this case, I'm, they have submitted everything they need, and I'm recommending public hearing for February 9th in this case.
Nine, the ninth, I can feel one, okay.
And that's okay.
Good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, aye, ayes, abstentions, six yes.
And good, I'm done.
Okay, now.
The maps are going to be signed, obviously. I do have 31 off the agenda, possibly.
31 is off, the best of all the...
She's got, she's got the other maps, which is off the...
Okay, 31 is off, definitely, very good. Okay, Jeff, rank about 1, 2, 3, 4.
Sorry, the packet, do you have the packet?
Oh, you want my packet?
That's on the reference pages.
Blair, yep. Yep.
Which one is this? Which one?
I don't know.
This is chair.
Jeff, which number?
So it's number 22.
22. Oh, did not make it. Okay, save me, save me having a look. Okay, thank you.
Oh, you signed here.
D and work Burke mat.
D and work Burke.
That is right, but usually it says other town plus...
All right, this is 46,274 square foot lot, encroached in the covenanted conservation easement area. So this is not your usual site disturbance application. This is essentially to restore. Look on survey here. It's covenanted buffer area here, which is on the northeasterly side, or northwesterly side, and this here, which is actually on the southwesterly side, or easterly side. This ecology here is your usual pitch pine oak forest. The applicant submitted a re-vegue plan that would restore that area, that buffer area, or conservation easement area, to be specific. You know, I'm sure you can see a good idea of the proposed plantings and area for the plantings.
So that's along Noriak Road?
So, yes, so the Noriak Road is a long trail, actually, or driveway.
The restaurant's on the corner of Tom.
Okay.
Was it Mick? So we reviewed the revegetation plan, and we believe that, uh, the proposed plan should bring the property back into compliance, uh, and we are considering this approved or for your consideration.
Okay, any questions? Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Craig, all in favor. I, opposed, abstentions. We have six yes, one absent, and you've got Northside Hills, that is in our packet.
Northside Hills. Also in the general, same general area, actually.
Yep, a little ways up the road.
Down the road.
Down the road, up the road. Know it well.
Okay. This applicant, um, disturbed about fourteen point eight percent of their natural vegetation where fifty percent is allowed. Uh, I actually walked the property along with the applicant. Uh, they disturbed this general area here. They do have an application before the building department, uh, actually a permit before the building department, they're trying to get it signed off for CO. Uh, they proposed this vegetation, which is also pitch pine oak forest as well in terms of ecology. Uh, so their proposed revege plan includes some choke berries, some, uh, inkberries, low bush and high bush, uh, blueberries, uh, and some oaks. There's some, uh, existing oaks on the property, uh, and they want to increase, if you notice on this map here, um, the vegetation on this rear, on the rear of the, uh, property itself. I'll give you an aerial as well. So at first glance, it'd be tough to see, but they cleared this general area here. And when I walked, it is essentially just mulch, no understory. So they proposed to vegetate all this area here, maintaining some of the existing vegetation as well. These evergreens here that are not native are not included.
So they, they take the evergreens out?
Uh, they're not going to take the evergreens out, they're going to add on to the evergreens.
Okay.
Had the surveyor, uh, provided a recalculation, excluding the evergreens to see if they would meet it without it, and they do meet it as proposed.
So they, you have them do the cleared area and where that lawn is.
Yep.
It looks like a lawn.
So all this area that looks essentially like, uh, sand.
Right.
Will be vegetated. There are some existing, uh, canopy, some trees, some, some oaks like I mentioned.
When, when you take out the vegetation, you, you get beach sand.
Yeah, you've, essentially.
You know, it's, the, the understory, you'll, you only go like four, four or five inches and you're in beach sand.
Essentially, yeah, and I actually had to get an argument with the surveyor. They didn't want to consider this to be cleared. I sent them pictures and video, uh, as I walked the property and did a site inspection, uh, so they went back to revise the survey to deem this, uh, over-cleared. But the, uh.
Good job, Jeff.
Uh, he actually even asked, uh, what do we consider over-cleared? Well, you're a surveyor, at this point, you would think they, they knew this, but.
You know, we've got a lot, they keep the trees and they put chem, new lawn underneath and they say, it's not cleared, here are the trees.
Oh, it's ridiculous.
It's the understory that really.
Often, yeah.
Oh, one hundred percent.
So when, presumably approve this, they then go back in, you know, April or something when the weather's good, put the shrubbery in, or the, you know, restore it, and then call you to have you come out and re-inspect? Is that?
That's correct. So, uh, we charge a hundred and twenty-five dollar inspection fee for each inspection, so if I get, uh, get there and the site itself is not, uh, consistent with the approved plan, I have to go back again, and they have to actually put in the appropriate plantings.
I can tell you, this is whether they've been planting straight through. Landscapers, are they planting?
They are.
Today?
They are. Um, I have a few instances where, uh, property owners want to close on properties or in the process of selling and want to open up a bond. I told them, we're not in the practice of that.
No.
Uh, Claire even mentioned that, I think we have a bond from maybe ten years ago.
Yeah.
That still is open. Uh, so there are, they wanted to present to the board and see if the board would have any recommendations or any alternative, uh, ways of addressing this, and I told them, sorry. You have to find another option outside of, uh, the planning board.
You know, bond is, is not, especially in this area, people just write a check and, yeah, my bond and leave. It's not like a commercial site plan where if the bushes have died along the side of the road, you can hire a landscaper and.
Oh, yeah.
Call the bond. To enter a private property with gates and privacy and dogs, the practicalities of enforcing a bond are, so that's why we don't take bonds on private residential parcels as opposed to site plans.
And that's why so much is over-cleared because unless they come to the town for some other reason.
Exactly.
Well, that's when they get.
Or your neighbor complains.
Usually on a sale or application of a building permit.
Yep.
So.
Those two are the high, uh, most common scenarios.
Good. So, um, you're good with the vegetation?
Yes, I believe the, uh, plan itself should bring this property back into compliance.
Very good. Do we have a motion to Northside Hills?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor. I, opposed, abstentions. We have six yes. We have William White.
Two more to go for you.
Yeah, William White is, uh, Watermill, two. Little Noyak Pass, close by. Three forty-four, Noyak Pass. Three forty-four, Noyak Pass.
That's another rose that comes and goes and.
Yeah.
Now, this plan, uh, they are over-cleared by one point nine percent.
So they planted one tree?
It's a pretty large piece, though.
This is a hundred eighty-five, eighty-five thousand seven hundred fourteen square foot eight, uh, lot. Um, so this one point, one point nine percent is approximately around three thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, the general revegetation area is really only comprised near this parking area in the rear of the property. As per the survey, it does equate to three thousand eight hundred and should bring this into compliance. Uh, there's really no need for additional, um, uh, canopy. He's proposing essentially low bush blueberries, uh, choke berries, uh, and inkberries as well, uh, and some bayberries in this area. He did the plan himself, I'm sure he can tell.
Good.
But it should, it should bring this property into compliance. Uh, the property itself is virtually, uh, preserved, I believe, a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet outside of this general area.
Okay. Okay, very good. Do we have a motion for William White?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor. I, opposed, abstentions. Six yes, and we have Deerhorn. Big day for Watermill. Both losing Watermill.
A lot of these properties are kind of off the beaten path.
Yeah.
So, you know, driving by, you'd never know.
They own it.
This one's adjacent to Watermill Heights, actually. Uh, this is a large piece, uh, which I believe also has the power lines running through the rear of it.
This is off of, off of Deerfield.
Yes, off of Deerfield.
This one in the red.
The one in the red, yes. It's a pretty long driveway. Um, Bob White does, uh, come off of Deerfield, as you mentioned, Gloria. Um, this is a new construction that's virtually also completed. It's probably too blurry for your view.
Steep slopes on that.
Ecology here also is pitch pine oak forest. Uh, lot size is approximately three hundred, four hundred thousand, uh, three hundred thousand, uh, square feet. Um, planting plan is pretty extensive, and I'm not sure you'd be able to see all of it here. Let me see if I can zoom out for you. Project itself is completely built. Uh, they are waiting, obviously, their CO as well, uh, and for a CO, they do need to complete this revegetation plan, uh, but the plantings are consistent with, uh, the native planting list I provided them as well, and also should bring this back to compliance.
What's, what's really sad about this is that this is a very large lot, so there was really no reason to over-clear.
No, absolutely not.
You know, it's not like you have to get the septic in or, on, oh, more, more house than the size of the lot really can handle.
They, builders.
This is just sloppy.
No, you're right, you're right. I think builders like to work on a clean slate, that's easier for them to maneuver, uh, but it does disturb and destroy, unfortunately, uh, some natural vegetation.
And what's put back is not anywhere like what was taken out.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
It seems there are some very steep slopes in this, in that area.
What's the percentage they were over-cleared there?
Uh, in totality, the percentage is five point eight percent.
That's a lot.
That's per the survey.
That's six, that's thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's a lot. All right, so you reviewed the planting list?
Yep, reviewed the plan, reviewed the planting list. I, I did a site inspection as well. Uh, there are some slopes back here, but it's already been developed.
All right, well, what's that?
For your consideration.
Yeah, okay, very good. Do we have a motion for Deerhorn?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by George, all in favor. I, opposed, abstentions. Six yes.
Can I ask you a question? What is, so what is the penalty, um, for over-clearing? Obviously, they have to fix it with their revege plan, but what is?
So two things that we kind of do is, uh.
Enforcement mechanism.